We're live. I'd like to call to order the October 16th, 2025 Columbia Borough Council Budget Workshop. Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselperson Zing.
Here.
Counselperson Kaufman.
Here.
Counselperson Stahl.
Here.
Counselperson Giesi.
Here.
Counselperson Murphy.
Here.
Here.
Hey, what?
Here.
All right, before we get to the invocation, I have a statement that I would like to read just to get it out of the way. As you know, there was a regular council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 14th. Late afternoon that day, it was discovered that the Borough website was down. We were able to determine it went down sometime afternoon that same day. The Pennsylvania Sunshine Act stipulates that an agenda must be posted online 24 hours in advance of a public meeting. While the agenda had been posted online several days in advance, it would not have been accessible for the entire 24 hours directly prior to the meeting. After consultation with the solicitor, it was determined, out of an abundance of caution with respect to potential sunshine violations, the meeting should be canceled with all business being pushed to subsequent meetings. While we understand this is not an ideal situation, a subsequent meeting will be extended to accommodate the delayed items. We feel strongly that this action complies with the letter and the spirit of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. That being said, did anyone care to offer an invocation? If you'd like, please rise from the silence. Counselperson Fisher, would you like to leave us in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive and information sessions, there were none. Were there any additions, deletions, or reorganization of the agenda needed? Not aware of any, all right. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as published?
Second.
Second.
A motion by counselperson Kaufman, second by counselperson Giesi, to approve the agenda as published, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, citizen comment on agenda items only. First sign up we have is Nikki Waldemeyer.
Hello, good evening, thank you for having us back. I am Dr. Nikki Waldemeyer, I am veterinarian. And last week I gave you guys that work here a list of resources and I want you to kind of approve those in less than five minutes. But first, as a veterinarian, I took an oath to use my scientific knowledge and skills for the benefit of society, for the protection of animal health and welfare, the prevention and the relief of animal suffering, the conservation of animal resources, and the promotion of public health. I gave you a resource from the Association of Shelter Veterinarians on Community Cat Management, in which it said that ASV supports a strategy for the humane management of community cat populations, including TNVR, trap, neuter, vaccinate, return. I also gave you information regarding the 2023 AAFP, or now Feline Veterinary Medical Association Free Roaming Cat Physician, in which they state the AAFP supports the humane management of free-roaming cats. A free-roaming cat is any cat not confined to a house or other type of enclosure. This includes owned and stray cats. So, your councilmember Todd Bergard is not here tonight, but I would like to educate all of you that none of those statements were the options of extermination of a cat given as an option to stray or feral cat population. The extermination, that definition is the killing, especially of a whole group or animals. And is an extremely strong word, whether you are a human or an animal. It is a felony in the state of Pennsylvania to intentionally or knowingly torture an animal which causes death. As a veterinarian, it is my privilege and never my right to do humane euthanasia, in which I take away pain and suffering from the animal that is in pain or suffering. But none of us in this room have a right to exterminate a living being. I would also like to follow up with you, kind of something that's relatively funny since I'm short on time, have more time. In all of the end-of-day movies, post-apocalyptic movies, you'll hear things where there's politics and there's the scientists. And the politicians never listen to the scientists, and then the little world happens. So I encourage you to listen to the scientists, that's me, the doctor. I end with telling you, President Heather Zing, when you said at the last meeting that the library is a hidden gem, I encourage you all to visit and to look at movies like this. If cats disappear from the world, the Barbary Play, which talks about the bubonic plague and weeds, and The Mosquito, a human history of our deadliest predator. One that I don't have in my collection, but I do want is called Rabbit, which talks about brains.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next sign up is Jennifer Maderas.
Maderas. Good evening, everyone, I greatly appreciate this opportunity. TNR, TNR, everybody complains, but so if you want to help, and if you're actually doing anything about it. Since its inception, the Columbia Cat Action Team has drastically reduced the feral cat population and continues to do so. Additionally, they have not only successfully TNVR 500-plus cats, but they have also helped helpless cats who are sick or injured receive the proper reprieve that all innocent creatures deserve. They've also had many cats taken off the street and have been adopted out to other countries, which I am beyond grateful for. None of the above is possible without the proper funds and without the community's support. To lead the feral cat population, to then to over-populate, then for themselves, transmit illnesses, when we have wonderful volunteers who are truly amazing or willing to help is one of the most heartless things anybody can do. Excuse me, losing my voice here. Our taxes are raised, our money is severely mismanaged, yet you dare to even think about to cut funding for such a wonderful program and that wonderful cause in this community is absolutely disheartening. The comments that some councilmembers made the other week were absolutely disgusting, and you know what it reminded me of? Uneducated drums in a trailer park. "Trappin' will control the population, let's just exterminate them." That's of a sociopathic nature, and that should never be voiced about the most vulnerable. I don't think anybody in this room would appreciate that if anybody else said that about their children, their grandchildren, or their parents. Not a single solitary innocent creature deserves to be abused, to suffer, or die simply because they exist. Clearly, those who have voiced those opinions have no idea the hard work and our wonderful volunteers and their dedication, the impact that it has on our community. These truly amazing people, they're stressed, they survive on little to no sleep, yet they're still here to help any way they can. TNR, just so you are aware, it's very similar to building a career. It takes time, it takes patience. They have been actively TNR-ing since 2021, I would say, and you're already at 500-plus cats. One thing that I do want to tell you is my success story with TNR. I am actually proof that it works. Within a four-year period, my husband and I have lived here for 11 years, just off of Ironville Pike. Within a four-year period, we were able to successfully trap, fix, vaccinate, and return over 28 cats, 29, to be exact. As a result, I have ferals who are all fixed, they're well-nourished, and they're enjoying their lives, not procreating. The nice thing about this, they're not going through our neighbor's trash, they're not wondering where their next meal is coming from, and the best part about it is that there are zero litters that have been born, thus reducing the stress on someone like me, my neighborhood, and my female cats. And if you don't believe me, you could simply Google this. There's places like San Antonio, Texas, San Jose, California, Rome, Italy, and shockingly, even Chicago, Illinois, have seen the reduction in their feral cat population due to TNR. For once, Chicago actually did something right. If the borough is going to raise our taxes and further mismanage our money and physically do nothing about the feral cat population besides be quiet, the very least you can do is to provide the proper funding and the support for an already overwhelmed group of wonderful people who truly care about us. And I'm going to tell you, I'll conclude with this. You could tell a person's character by how they talk or how they treat the most vulnerable, especially with helpless animals who never asked or deserve to be born into this situation. We must rise and come together as a community and stand out as a guiding light for future TNR projects, not only here,
Thank you.
but across Pennsylvania.
Thank you, we have a few late of signups.
Thank you.
The next sign up is Kami Delbert.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, members of the council. I am here tonight representing Columbia Animal Shelter and speaking as a concerned citizen. I was deeply troubled by the comments made during a recent discussion about the Columbia Cat Action Team. Some of their remarks shared, particularly those suggesting inhumane and lethal methods of cat control were disappointing and unacceptable coming from community leaders. It is especially disheartening to hear such comments from a councilmember who was once an inaugural member of CPAT, who worked alongside our shelter and who was publicly recognized in local media coverage for some more supporting and promoting this program. This individual once stood proudly for a humane, community-driven approach to animal population management, the very principles CPAT embodies. To now advocate for extermination contradicts both that legacy and the values of everything that we stand for. The tone and language used during the discussion were both unprofessional and inconsistent with the borough's own expectations for civility. The Borough Agenda clearly states that officials and members of the public are expected to conduct themselves with dignity and respect, and that personal insults and inappropriate conduct are out of order. That standard should apply equally to every person sitting at your table. Columbia Animal Shelter is proud to be in a polling location for your Borough elections and an active partner in community initiatives. We believe in fostering empathy, collaboration, and respect. The CPAT program built upon those same values is a proven success. It is humane, effective, efficient, and this year has even opened a new chapter in Marietta, thanks in part to the success seen here in Columbia. I urge this council to reaffirm its commitment to professionalism and respect in public discourse and to recognize the importance of humane, evidence-based approaches to animal welfare. Our community and its animals deserve nothing less. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Liz Ross.
I learned from the last time I interviewed her.
Well, he is here down a little bit.
So, I'm here tonight to do a few things. I wanted to iterate that the people who have spoken before me really, really do understand the situation. They have expressed the concern of the provisions we used, but I wanted to remind you of what our original ask is about. We have asked for 400 million dollars. And in return for that ask, we have shown to you that we are responsible in how we spend that money, that we have a 370% of our money invested to you, to really afford it. That is outstanding. We have also gone above and beyond our appointment a lot. At 110%, we are effective and we are efficient. And because we measure from early October to late September, we are now actually working on our next year's term as to how effective and efficient we are. So, let's start with last Monday. We had a trapping session, two cats that went to go out for 27 hours. They were able to trap 10 cats, three kittens. Seven of those cats were female. The three kittens went and they were, they are going to be available for adoption. What is the compromise of the socialization process? So, in spite of the fact that the verbiage that was used to discuss how we are managing the cat population, our trappers still went out. And not only did they meet the expectation, they exceeded the expectation. Trapping 13 cats in one session is unprecedented. And yet, they chose to go out in the pouring, pouring rain on the way. One of them is a city dog, confident they still went out. This mission is so, so important to them that this is the kind of response that they hope for at every single session. The citizens who we are talking for were hoping they would call and say, "The cat's in a trap." So the tracker will go from this location over to this location. They will move a cat back to the shelter, they'll share it out inside before it got too wet. It's an amazing logistics nightmare to make this happen when you start adding in a property of cats that we live in. And then do it every single month, twice a month, every single month. So please, when you're thinking about how to study the cat's behavior, you can turn to the community when they want to come back. We have been there, we have told you about how successfully our professional ones, how friendly we are. Please, remember that this is an important part of building a community. You want to be known as the community that's compassionate and empathic and really is about building a community. And what is more than a name and a banner than a technique? So please, it's like, why do you really say, "I don't know what it means," because I've already done it, you can't leave hard, you can't leave it? Thank you.
Thank you. The next sign up is Sharon Linder.
I'm Karen.
Next sign up is Mike McConley.
Hey, I'm just here to give some recognition and support and just say how much I support the Cat Action Team and you know, they're just a great organization and can work with us as a shelter. And you know, and just, and you remind you guys, the shelter, you know, that's such an asset for Columbia and that's why we did it. But you know, not one penny of tax pay money gets funded out, it's all from us personally and from the founding foundation. So, everything we do is for Columbia and we didn't, we didn't do it for profit, it's a nonprofit. But yes, we're a Columbia organization, you know, for the town and the animals of Columbia. So that's really what we do it for. Now, and whether the, I'm kind of going the opposite way, whether the Cat Action Team is funding or not, you know, their mission is so important that they coincide with the shelter, you know, we're going to fund it. Whether you guys do or not, it's something we need to do and we're going to continue to do it. So, I just wanted to say how important their job was. And if you don't recognize that, at least if you don't give the financial support, give it some support and some attaboys and at least recognize it in town or to the people that, you know, how important this is and the job we're doing, you know. It's like they always say about the, you know, somebody says, "I'm here from the government, I'm here to help." That's when you run the other way. So you know, if you guys don't want to help, you know, we can certainly fund it and take care of ourselves. But we really, you know, we'll go the other way with it, but we can have enough support from the town and from the fundraisers and the organization and the foundation. We're going to, we're going to take care of it, it's what Columbia needs, so we're going to do the right thing for Columbia like we always do. We always do the right thing for Columbia, you know, whether it's fixing up our properties, our businesses, or the animal shelter, we're going to do what Columbia needs to do. So, I just want to say, you know, I'm here to support the action team, to say, for a bunch of volunteers, how good of a job they do, it's an unthankless job and they're awesome. And so, everybody from the shelter just do, so you know, that's all I want to say about that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next sign up is Patty McConley. Is there anyone else that did not get a chance to sign up that wanted to speak? Yes, Frank.
Did I just hear the block over there?
Yes.
I'm going to make sure I'm receiving the right thing. At the last meeting, you made new rules, which simply had five-minute period for the seven people that was here, where they could get to the Borough. But you then enforced that rule, why?
He's talking about the people that had presentations, that's what he's talking about.
Oh, yeah, we just wanted them to keep it at five minutes and some of them went over, you know?
Many of them said five minutes, kept the five-minute rules, but that block, did they use that? I want them to just wonder why and we want to make you accountable, that's all.
Wanted to be able to give the organizations the time that, you know?
Then when you set the rules in five minutes, like I said, someone was 35, I wonder why. I know since I've been coming to these meetings under your rule, rules just change all the time and I just am trying to find out why. I'd like to get to the cats, if you want to answer that or whatever. Here's an article from my newspaper, February 20th, 25. There's this whole part of it. Myself, I have been cat-mated. I kind of watch, make sure the money goes the right places. What I can see, there's one type of a dog. And to me, the cat programs, it's a quality of life issue, it's something that needs to be done. I know the Borough, they look out for the dogs and whatever animals there is, but the cat people, I really admire what they do. I can trap, but I'm going to donate as long as I live, so. So I'd just like to read you two things in the afternoon, yeah. Says here, "Coming," now, just remember this, this was back in 22. Says here, "Cattle Action Team volunteers have trapped and neutered about 128, 123 feral lives. Since June, some cats find new homes, while others return outdoors after surgery." The group's Facebook page, Facebook page, hosts cats available for adoption as well as trapped cats in case someone is looking for a missing feral life. Another program here, another program. It's to bad, Todd, work order is in here. It says here, "How it started." Todd Bergard, "Both stunned, found councilmembers last May. Columbia's estimated population of 1,000 community cats could grow to more than 11 million in nine years. Providing families had two liver a year, and that's about three cats survived from each liver. It took us weeks to put all this information together," said Bergard, "who worked with fellow councilmember Sharon Linder and her several residents complained about cats causing property damage." And of course, they do kill wildlife too. But I just, I don't know where these people are coming from when they want to take the money away from the program. That's one, they don't have a manager and the Borough isn't paying all the high dollars for the different deals that the Borough has. I just wish you would relook at that funding, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that wanted to speak that didn't get a chance to sign up? All right, Mayor Lutz.
I have nothing, it's just time.
Thank you. Action items, as this was a budget workshop, we did not originally plan to be...
Madam President, you have to speak.
Yes, oh yeah, I'm sorry, chief, you're on the chief's side.
Thank you. Detective Jesse Zimmerman announced his retirement. He will separate from the Borough sometime in January of 2026. We have seven candidates for the patrol officer testing that is scheduled for this Monday, the 20th. And lastly, Corporal Andrew Snyder will be promoted to sergeant effective October 27th.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right. As I was saying, we don't, we wouldn't normally vote at a workshop. However, there were three items on the agenda for Tuesday that could not wait until the next meeting. So we're going to take action on those before we get to the budget workshop. The first is, could I have a motion to authorize the bill payments?
Second.
A motion by counselperson Kaufman and a second by counselperson Murphy to authorize the bill payments. Are there any questions on the bills? I know it looks like a lot, there were some, this was the month when big payments go out. The pension, police pension and all that stuff. All right, if there's no questions, I have a motion by counselperson Kaufman, second by counselperson Murphy to authorize the bill payments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, the next item is your certificate of appropriateness for 22 North Third Street. This had come before us in September and we didn't have the opinion from the Historic Preservation Group. So it has now come back with that, with that determination. Is there anything we need to add on that?
Do you know if the HARB is going to go with the recommendation?
HARB already gave us their recommendation, they did that outside of... They didn't consider the Historic Preservation Trust's opinion.
There was, there was one, they recommended that the change, that there be, in the area, a proposed door infill of the existing garage doors, a more commercial door. Might be more appropriate for commercial use. Are they going to bother changing that or just...
The HARB isn't going to do anything because they're not, they didn't see this the second time.
Okay.
If we want it changed, we have to add that as a condition.
Going back to our last conversation on this, two of the biggest things, well, three things actually. Number one is the size of it and the fact that, A, it's going to be used for your tenant, the tenants of that property as well, number one. So is it mainly for the tenants and for people that want to come in and use it? I don't know. The description that's in the HARB application, one says laundromat, one says laundry services. So again, we never really got a clarification on that the last time. But my other two biggest concerns are, number one is parking. There's absolutely no parking for the... There's absolutely no parking for that anywhere except on the streets. And that's fine, but the fact that it opens out the proposed entry and entrance, excuse me, the entry and exit of the, that you proposed is right onto a public alleyway. An alleyway is the same as a street in this town. And that alleyway in particular is one of the most, more heavily traveled ones. People use that as shortcuts uptown, they use it to turn into, go into Hinkle's Lot or exit Hinkle's Lot. I certainly don't want to, you know, prove something and have it come back, you know, a couple months from now, somebody got hit by a car. And I say, oh, geez, look at council, you know, what are they thinking of again? So that is a big concern of mine, that I know it's not necessarily Harb's to address, but it is council's to address.
That was actually addressed. The drawings that we had given from the others, that's actually recesses out in about three feet. So when you exit those doors, which is double doors, they're about forty-eight inches. You come out and you're not stepping into the street. You'll have full access and view of the entire alley.
But will the cars? They're going to, they're going to be in an alcove. And the car coming down here is not going to know there's people staying in the alcove ready to step out. I hope the people that are using it, one would hope, in the fact that really the responsibility is on them. Because it's one way down, so.
It's just stepping out of the street. You got to look both ways.
I totally agree. I totally get what you're saying, but this is a public street.
As long as they look both ways, you should have no issue. I mean, we even opened it up so there's glass on the corners. You can see further down to that section. I mean, it's a one-way, so they should only have to work with that. Shouldn't be a huge issue.
Is there a reason it's being called two different things? Because in your original application, you say it's a repair facility, a laundry repair, not a laundromat. So some of the documents are confusing as to exactly what it is.
No, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're allowed to say. I do remember at the top, it could say laundromat.
Calling along with that, I've heard, I just heard, two, to me, two different uses. I'd like to know some explanation. Is it going to be for the tenants? Or is it going to be for tenants and the public?
Tenants and the public. It's twenty-four-seven for our tenants. There's a privacy door there, so they'll have access to it. Six to eight.
Oh, I see, Joanne, one of the proposed alterations says add service room for laundry equipment repair.
That's where it got the repair at.
Yeah.
And the other thing was, I know the historic trust or whatever wrote that letter. But, I mean, that's not really, to me, a professional letter. It's not on letterhead, it's not signed by anybody, it's just.
Yeah, that's how their stuff has come along.
But, I mean, for the amount of money you pay them to do that and write that letter, that's unacceptable.
I thought they used to come on letterhead and stuff.
Yeah, because it just looks like a typed up, you don't, I mean, honestly, we don't know who wrote it. We're saying it's from them, we don't know, we have no idea who wrote it.
True. Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to get back to the parking. Um, Paula, there's parking allotted, I'm sure for the building and tenants. But if you have the additional, a commercial property that's, that is open to the public, does that require more parking spaces?
It's considered and necessary to what's there, so it would be no different than off-street parking. Um, I know there's concern about parking in, across the alleyway, in another parking lot. Um, I believe that that parking lot is posted. So the owner of, of that parking lot can do what he needs to do if he finds that people are parking there for the laundry.
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, that's all covered in the zoning determination, and that's not part of what we're asked to approve for the certificate of appropriateness.
And you can do all speed park.
Right, yeah. And.
That's grandfathered.
Likewise, I would hope that patrons are advised not to park in the alley and be loading, because that is a busy alley. There, there should not be people, that'll back up traffic. That's my concern.
The, the access door that the tenants will have, where does that, from the picture, do you remember where it comes from? Where it accesses, accesses into, this drawing I'm looking at ain't really, I see.
People get entryway there?
Yep.
You can kind of see a little bit of a hole, just a little out there.
Right here?
One of the pictures, one of the pictures shows a staircase with a green door.
Yeah, it's a green door.
To the left of the garage.
Does anyone have any, um, anything else? Just to refresh everyone's memory, HARB recommended approval with the conditions that the exterior door be a glass door and two windows that are currently covered be reopened, and the wall to the left of the door in the setback be a glass wall. I don't think any of that contradicted what came from the historic preservation trust. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
What's the motion?
To.
With Harb's comments?
Correct.
All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Kaufman, to approve certificate of appropriateness with the conditions that the exterior door be a glass door and the two windows that are currently covered be reopened, and the wall to the left of the door in the setback be a glass wall. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
No.
Do you know the nose?
Two.
Two noses.
Sorry, we didn't speak very loud either.
Same time.
Yeah.
Do you want to sign? That way we'll have it all signed, have it official. All right. And then Paul will make sure you get a copy of it and everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Yeah, sorry for the cancellation on Tuesday. Why do I have this in here? It's not even on this agenda. Okay, um, the third item we had is, we're asked to waive the fee for the market house rental. Um, the fee of three hundred seventy-five dollars, the Columbia High School volleyball boosters. The only reason this had to be done is because this is happening this weekend.
Again, this is, um, where generally this would have just been a measure to the organization, okay? Where I want to show council and the public, the money is being allocated for this. Generally, we're not spending any money, but we're not receiving any. So that's why I asked to have it done this way.
All the, all the paperwork we have here, it doesn't say what they're going to do there.
Bonnie's, Bonnie's here.
Bonnie, are they, I think they're having a banquet, aren't they?
Probably what it is.
It's the volleyball banquet.
Really recognize students and that kind of stuff for accomplishments. They probably will have a dinner.
Yeah.
That's typically what they do.
Okay, okay. One twenty-five times three, is that per hour?
Yes. Yep.
So I understand that. Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we waive the fee.
All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Councilperson Fisher to waive the market house rental fee of three hundred seventy-five dollars for the Columbia High School volleyball boosters. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right. Okay, thank you. Now we are down to the workshop items. First item is review fund oh-one budget. Before we get into that though, Mr. Yutz would like to, has a few statements to.
Thank you. What we tried to do just today is just highlight a few things that would kind of start the conversation, if you will, on the draft budget. Uh, and I just thought I'd go down these quickly, and I think it will help, uh, kind of set the stage for where we are and where we're proposing to go. I just want to mention that the twenty-twenty-five general fund revenues are currently at eighty-three percent through the end of September. Certainly a good place to be. And that our twenty-twenty-five general fund expenditures are currently at sixty-nine percent through the end of September. So again, um, we're finding out that the budget that was adopted a year ago is working extremely well. And we would be hopeful that by the end of the year, um, that we end up in a real positive place. The twenty-twenty-six proposed general fund revenues are zero point seven percent over twenty-twenty-five. Again, no surprise that revenues tend to be flat. The twenty-twenty-six proposed general fund expenditures are currently projected at ten point one percent, uh, over twenty-twenty-five. Some of the contributing factors to, for the proposed twenty-twenty-six general fund increases are the following. We have a contractual wage increase of four percent for all uniform officers. We have a contractual wage increase of three percent for all non-uniformed employees. We are anticipating a twenty percent increase in healthcare benefits for all full-time employees. We have increased in pension obligations for our actuarial consultants. We're proposing an addition of a code inspector and a vehicle to the code department. We're proposing an addition of a full-time employee for the market house. And we're also proposing additional funding to the fire company. Some of the areas that we are anticipating to save money for twenty-twenty-six are as follows. We're looking at a decrease of twenty-seven percent in our workers' comp coverage. A decrease of about twenty percent in the firefighters' workers' compensation coverage, which we also pay. We're looking at a decrease of overall fifteen thousand dollars in the market house operating spending, and a savings of about fifteen thousand in our fleet leasing program. So again, some very brief highlights, just kind of where we are, where we think we're going. I wanted to use that to kind of open the dialogue and council can direct how they want tonight to go. So thank you.
So before we get started here, I want to thank Brian, Ron and Jack for stepping in the last three months. To a mess.
Weeks.
Whatever. Seems like months.
Yeah, same then.
I, I, I can't appreciate how much I appreciate having a budget this quick. So I know it's been stressful, hard work, but, uh, I appreciate it. So the second comment I have is, our proposed budget last year, twenty-twenty-five, we were going to take out three hundred twenty-eight thousand out of a surplus fund, or not surplus fund, but a. Reserves. My understanding last year was we had one point five million in reserves. Is that somebody right?
It was, it was about one point four, I think.
It was a year before.
Okay. This year, for twenty-twenty-six budget, we're looking at one point one million to come out. One point one one million. One million, one hundred and eleven thousand, I'm saying that wrong. It's how many, uh, mils?
Two and a half.
Two and a half mils. So if we pass the twenty-six budget as is, we make it to twenty-six. Twenty-seven is a whole nother story.
And there is no reserve.
There's no reserve.
And we dipped below the fifteen percent that we have set in policy.
What do we live fifty percent this year?
No.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-six, yes.
Twenty-six. So I just want, I just want both council and the public to be aware that, um, while it's said that we have a spending problem, I don't necessarily agree with that, but we are to our max, and we are. So with that, there you go.
All right, um, so just a couple of notes that I saw going down through here. First, you'll notice, um, the property tax, the assessment did go down, so that is down slightly. Ethan, I wanted you to know that I did considerable research in the last week and a half on split rate tax. In the state of Pennsylvania, there are two boroughs that, um, do have a split rate tax. The rest of them are cities. Um, there are a number of municipalities that did use split rate and then have reversed it and so forth. But, um, I sat down with the hour, with our tax duplicate and started messing around, and I got to where, to get tax neutral, to get revenue neutral, I was at sixteen point five percent tax millage on, um, land, and then I went, and then with that, I was able to drop down to eight mils on structure. When I did that, um, I was, I, I spot checked about forty. No, just random going down through, oh, let's check this. And I checked random people. About half of those saw their taxes go up, and about half of them saw their taxes go down. Those that went up, went up by hundreds of dollars. Those that went down, went down no more than like fifty bucks a year. Um, I mean, it, it's definitely something we can look at, but it would definitely, um, take a lot of finagling to try and find that sweet spot. The other thing you have to realize is that, um, there is a cap on the total millage. So if you're raising that land millage up, you're taking away your ability.
To increase.
To increase, yes.
Yeah, I think it was more of a suggestion for the future, because I know that there will be a new appraisal process as part of that, so it's more of a.
No, it's not new appraisal.
Well, I thought that they had to reappraise the land.
No, it, no, it's already done.
Okay, just want to.
No, in, in the. No, and, I mean, if you look at your tax bill that comes, you'll even see like, or no, maybe it's not on the bill that comes. But, uh, if you look your, your property up on the, uh, on the, on the Lancher County Tax Collection Bureau website, it'll tell you what your land is assessed, like your land assessment versus your structure assessment. You know, one of the, one of the comments you had made about, um, the split, the split tax and, and what it, what it could do is encouraging, um, entities that are underutilized and so forth. Um, a couple, a month or so ago, I had suggested, and I still stand by this, that I would like to see us explore having a vacant property registration. Thing is, if they've got to pay, it's, you make that fee like two fifty a year or something. you make that fee like two fifty a year or something. They're gonna have to pay extra, but we have to watch with that kind of stuff because we can't charge more in fees than what it costs us to administer the program because that's the state law. So there there's that as well, but I think if you if you said you got to pay a fee because you're not using this property, like the the property that I specifically think of, because I think every person sees this every time they come into town, is the old Sanoco station across from Black Olive. Like, it just sits there and it is an eyesore. I could make the case that that is actually would is an attractive nuisance. I mean, there's trash behind it and everything else. I would like to see something done there, you know?
Yeah, I think that the when I was I yeah, I would like to see it discussed further potentially next year. I know that specifically when in the two thousands when Pat Toomey was kind of in charge of getting that together for Allentown, that he spoke to a man named Joshua Vincent, the head of economic development in Pennsylvania. He I I he seems to be willing to come out to a lot of municipalities to discuss the tax thing, so realistic option for this upcoming.
Yeah, but I want to get into it and I I spent a lot of time slicing and dicing numbers and, you know, I just kind of was like, oh, let me pick some numbers and see how this goes. I mean, one of the one of the articles I found said that in order to make it across the board reduction in property tax, your the millage on the land needs to be like four times the other millage. So and to fit that, the combined two, under thirty mils would be really hard for for somewhere like Columbia. So and because that's the cap that the state says the property tax can be no more than thirty mils.
Well, thank you, Columbia.
Yep, and the other thing, I I wasn't sure if that also I'm not sure if that has to include, I don't think it has to include the school district as well.
It's recommended.
But I'm not sure. But yeah, so there's that.
Thank you.
All right. Revenue. Revenue. There's if there's questions, we'll just kind of quick go down through here. Revenue. Account three oh one, that's pretty. I mean, any questions on that? That is what it is.
The three oh one one hundred, the lower assessment value, what was that from? Because the county didn't do an assessment this year, did they?
No.
If I may, it was just a small reduction.
Yeah.
And more than likely, it could have been something as simple as a few demolished homes or or something that got reassessed for some purpose. It was such a small number, it could have only applied with reprocess.
Yeah, probably.
That makes sense.
Or someone appealed their assessment and got
I guess.
Yeah.
Assessment.
Or like you said, there there could have been properties that got taken off the tax, you know?
Yeah.
There's a lot of different things. Any other questions on that part? Three ten, local enabling act taxes. Are predicting a a moderate increase in the earned income tax. Likewise with the local services tax. And deed transfer tax. Any questions on that one? Three twenty, license and permits. I think that's pretty. Yeah, that the cable TV franchise, that's a that's a contract, same with the cell tower. They're all contractual. Three thirty, fines and forfeitures.
I had a question on the licenses.
Okay.
On, we recently, in the last year or so, have had a lot of fiber optic coming into town. And just curious, was was any of that licensed similar to like Comcast and the cable agreement or is there any sort of arrangement there?
The the only arrangement is that is that thing we put in place for the right of way and sharing the holes and so forth. That's the like, you can't it the the thing with the the reason we have the cable TV franchise, and that's a separate thing, is because you know, we we only have Comcast here in the borough and that's because we have that franchise agreement. Each municipality has a franchise agreement with whatever cable company, like Blue Ridge or whatever. So and they pay the municipality to be to be in the borough. But the rest of them, like there's no because you can have any, you know, any number of
Is it is it a free-for-all? Like, could another
Yes.
A fiber company come in and start competing and put their own system up?
Yes.
So why is that? Is that the cable systems were regulated from the
PUC.
From the state?
Right, the PUC regulates all that.
This is a concern I have for, just in general, it doesn't have to do with our taxes, but there's a lot of wires and coils of wires hanging in the air now because of that, and I would hate to see another company come in and compete alongside Brightspeed and add their wires. I think that should be something brought up to our state representative or something.
Yeah, we have talked to them about that. And there is there is something going through the state right now. I'm not sure how far it's going to make it through because they're focused on the budget stuff, but there is legislation going through the state about the you know, mandating that unused wires have to be taken down when service is disconnected. I forget where it's at and I cannot remember the number off the top of my head, but there is a bill going through the state. Do you remember that, Leo?
I do.
Brett was telling us about that. Yeah, I can't remember the the number or where it's at. I think it was the local government committee it was, or something like that.
Yeah, doing that with the cable TV franchise, we tried at least twice that I'm aware of, you know, to we even hired a lawyer one time to represent us along with two or three other municipalities in the area and you just didn't get anywhere with
Right.
With Comcast, sorry to say.
Anything else?
I mean, it should be a lot higher, but
Yeah, I know, right? Fines and forfeits, three thirty.
I have a question. How was the parking fines fifteen percent increase estimated? Is that just more like aggressive enforcement or?
No, basically, what the way a lot of these are, the ones that are noted that say average actuals, what we do is we take the previous years combined with, we take current year to did like to date, this was all, I think, through September or through August, extrapolated out, use that and average like three years or did you guys average three years or four years or something like that?
Percentage increase.
Yeah.
The other part of that is increased enforcement hours. Right, guys have been doing four hours enforcement, for example, down to River Park.
And also, we've seen that the increased enforcement comes from the increase of bad parking behavior, parking, you know, in the crosswalks and, you know, double parking, handicap parking in the handicap space when they're not handicapped, all that kind of stuff. Any other questions on three thirty-ones? Three forty, interest rent royalties, that's as you'll notice, we are counting on the first part of the wastewater treatment plant being sold by the end of April. We are counting on, we did, that is a full year of the firehouse rent because we just can't count on anything right there. I did say to decrease, I did request to decrease in the market house all events rental because we're we're trying to not do as much big stuff there. I also requested a decrease in the community kitchen because I don't think we have the number of people using it as we
It's no longer a community kitchen.
Had in the past.
No.
So that needs to be eight zero?
Yes.
Is so wait a minute. If people, if standholders are using the kitchen, they are paying extra for that?
Yes.
Is there anyone renting out the kitchen space?
But that's under a
That's under the the stand rental, right? So there would be no community kitchen. So. So Brian, that is
Would the stand rental go up at all, you think, Eric?
Excuse me?
Would the stand rental amount go should go up a little bit because of griddles being in there more actively?
We we have a contract with them and if they go past the allotted time that we've given them for that price, then they will pay more, or if they open on different days, then what we
As well as other standholders, right? If they're open on a Tuesday and a Thursday, it would be an additional whatever.
Yeah, we haven't really discussed that
Okay.
I don't see that happening. A lot of our standholders work full-time, so. But with the the restaurant, they have Saturday from seven to three and then they have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, eleven to two, so just the lunchtime. So anything past that, we will charge another fee for.
And Griddles is planning extra events, correct, Bonnie, on Sundays possibly?
They talked about a brunch that we haven't made a commitment to. But that would be an extra to them if they do that.
Basically, in this budget, you need to do away with the community kitchen.
Right.
Brian, that is three forty-two, two oh six. All right.
So you you should then project, because you can, but this is a projection.
Right.
As guests, you should protect that your standout will have an increase.
Yeah. I wouldn't increase them that much because the other thing is not
That's where that should wind up.
Yeah, the other part of that is I don't think that that takes into account any vacancy percentage, so.
That might be true. Everything is full at this time and we have
Right.
We're gonna open some new booths as well.
Yeah.
The forty We have a deeper discussion on reducing the large events in the market house. Bonnie and I have discussed this and we do acknowledge that it is a strain on her and certainly is, you know, long days, long hours. But we would like to maybe we would like to maybe take a look at this, you know, our pricing for such things as weddings. You know, maybe increase that amount rather substantially. We think it's low right now. And we wanted to have this discussion in the context of possibly adding a part-time employee to assist with these events.
So you're you're saying to keep the all all the events, only raise the prices for larger events?
We would like to increase the number of events. Yeah, with the goal of balancing the budget, and I know it's been a challenge.
One concern I have, Jack, is competing against other hall businesses in Columbia.
Businesses.
Businesses. We're supposed to be an incubator for business. And I don't think competing business against businesses is sending a good message.
I respect that and Bonnie and I had that conversation.
We also had a river park we did use to compete as a hall too, or as a venue, so.
Our venue is unique.
I understand.
You know, I I think not everyone is going to be interested in maybe having an event there.
I I just
But the standard income, right now, Bonnie's done a great job. I think all the stands are full, which is super. We're looking at maybe forty-five to almost fifty thousand in income just based on stand rentals.
Right.
You know, if we could almost match that, you're almost breaking even then with with the budget.
Another another avenue we looked at was starting another day. The other day will probably be Friday evening. At the end of evening. Well, I would go after the standholders for an increase right now. I believe once we can prove that that's a functional day, that it works, then we could go after standholders for an increase of usage of time. Again, that's going to take time to pan out. It's not going to happen overnight. To charge a standholder an extra day per week. Wheeling up foot traffic won't be there. It's kind of unrealistic. But they are interested in three days or in two days.
Yeah, we did agree to do Fridays. She said we could have till the end of the year. And then we'll kind of take a look at whether it makes sense to go that route or not. And again, I have to reiterate that many of my standholders work full-time jobs, so.
Right, I understand. But now you're looking at you're looking at Friday and Saturday market days, they're two prime days. Two or three prime days.
Those go pretty well for the most part. Depending on what type of event Mac is sponsoring. And a lot of times that will bring people in. We were open last Friday because of my Amish stands all had a holiday religious holiday on Saturday. And we had a lot of traffic through there on Friday. So that was very promising. And I think we should give the standholders a chance to see, you know, what they can do. We're only doing it for November and December. And and then we'll reevaluate whether it makes sense to do that or not.
We're planning on getting a little more aggressive as far as promoting the venue. Bonnie spoke of a online subscription service called Event Detective. It's three hundred dollar a year cost, annual cost. And we discussed some other advertising as well.
Of course, there's enough, yeah. We did not pay for the subscription. We've been using the free service, but it's going to run out, so we have to either decide to use it or not use it.
I was wondering
A lot of it is not, it says local, but a lot of it was Gettysburg, Hanover. Just a lot of, I don't know if people will drive that far for a venue. They might.
Maybe once the hotel's built.
Yes, I I agree with that. I think out of a list, like usually you'll get eight to ten hits at a time. And usually you might find one that's actually Columbia out of that. But some of them are close enough that people would travel, but we've eliminated the kitchen, so that makes it difficult for somebody to travel from Chambersburg to come here to do an event because if they're bringing their food, they're going to have to reheat it somehow.
Right.
And we don't have that option right now. So we just have to kind of look at all that.
Why can't they use the kitchen? Because it's belongs to Griddles. So it's belongs to Griddles all the time.
I I think that's the safe way to do it.
I didn't know, that's why I was asking.
Right.
And that's kind of why we got rid of the idea of shared kitchen. Because it's unfair to Griddles have other people Because it's unfair to Griddle's to have other people going and using it. Maybe leave it, Terry.
Use their stuff. And then they're responsible too, for like the health inspector comes in and sees something, it's on them, not whoever used it. So that makes sense.
Have any of the other venues in Columbia mentioned that they lose business because the Market House is open for events? They have?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I know venue holders. I know all the venue holders personally. They've expressed it to me. I mean, again, there's three main venues in Columbia. On top, well, there's five venues in Columbia, Columbia Boroughs too.
My question to Bonnie though is, is that a pricing structure issue? You know, are we too low?
It was.
It was.
It was. We were absolutely too low.
That's how we.
And that's why we were, we were undercutting.
What if we make ours extremely high?
That I, that I would agree with.
And then.
If somebody absolutely needs it, because those people would pay four thousand dollars for a venue. I'm not saying it has to be that high, but.
We're looking at reasonable increases.
I think.
I know.
Heather, whatever it is.
Some people will, you're right.
I think that competition is good for business. But it has, we can't be undercutting.
Right.
For that to, for that to be the case. I think we need to do it in such a way that it's benefiting all the venue. I mean, if, if Columbia is the place to get a venue, is what I'm saying.
And if there's, if the issue is, you know, the work and everything, I know when we originally were talking about this, it was, you know, people have to set up their own thing and people have to clean up their own thing and this and that. And I know somewhere along the line, that didn't happen because, you know, they, they wanted to, you know, someone wanted to just, and also people were not being charged for their setup time or their cleanup time.
That's a good risk.
And so, I mean, is it, is it something that maybe in order to cut down on that, we tell them for these big events, they have to have a, a day of coordination. They have to hire a coordinator for onsite. Like to do all their stuff.
Here's, here's another concern I have with the big events.
That's not gonna get banned out the door on time.
Here's your concern.
Well, then they, then they, they write a check that night to, you know, they pay for that time.
I think one thing you need to be careful about is that when, when you say wedding venue, are you offering, you know, glassware and linens and that sort of thing? So I, I think there's a, there's a very big separation on who, who's gonna rent the Market House for a venue and who's gonna want to rent perfect settings.
Right.
There's a difference.
You know.
Do you have a minimum requirement for guests to attend? So, you know, some wedding venues that I help with planning, you have a minimum amount of guests that have to sit in that room to even talk about recipes?
Yeah, no, we don't have a minimum. We do have, you know, our, our capacity is one twenty-eight, so I think we will probably cut that at one twenty-five. Now, there are some things that are social events where people are coming and going and they're not staying for the entire time.
So we could look at something like, you know, perfect settings, you may have a hundred seats where you have one twenty-five. And if we're in competition and you're under your one hundred number, so say I'm coming in with sixty-five people, I pay a surplus fee because I don't have a hundred twenty-five people, so you have that whole room. So we could charge a little bit more because it's not hitting the number we'd like to see in that, that venue.
Yeah, I mean comfortably, the market would be good for sixty to seventy. We can do one twenty-five. That is really pushing.
So the other, the other thing I saw with wedding venues, big venues, is especially weddings, people generally have a reception the same day they get married. So they want to set up the day before possibly, or early in the morning. But that ends up putting our staff time at a day, day and a half for a wedding venue. And we may only charge so much for that start cleanup time or anything else. It, a lot gets missed in that and yet well, the expectation to be there is there. So those big events are real, I mean, somebody to me would really have to pay enormous fee just to take that.
Well, I thought we did have.
We did.
A wedding, a wedding fee, like.
We did. That was changed when, when Steve came on board. It was changed. And we did talk about changing it back and even increasing it more than it was.
Yeah, because I thought it was like a thousand dollars.
It was twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, yeah.
But even higher than that's not.
We have talked about two thousand.
Yeah, propose two thousand.
General, what are the current fees for an event? Is that like a structured?
Yeah, all of our, all of our events are one twenty-five an hour and they now have to include the setup and care downtime before we didn't charge for that. But then you have people that were doing three-hour lead-in times, which, you know, they, they do a lot, a lot ahead of time if they know they're paying for that time. So that part has worked out really well. I, I only have two contracts that are still left over that have those big lead-in times. Everything else has the ends tucked in, which has been fabulous. So yeah, the wedding piece, I, I think we need to work on. There's, there's a few things we do have to do before we can charge two thousand dollars for our venue. It, it is not quite perfect yet.
But if you spend five hundred dollars, then you gotta raise the two thousand dollar rate.
If I spend five hundred one time, or?
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna spend money to make it appeasing for that kind of money, then that cost goes up again.
I was just talking about like a frame with a curtain that covers the candy stand that has the pink drops on it.
Right, pink ones.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about a lot of extra, but there are just a few things that would make, make a huge difference. Nobody wants to see all, all the stands in the back.
Oh, I, I agree with you, Bonnie. I agree. I'm just saying, if you're gonna add costs, right now, we're saying if the hall right now is two thousand dollars, if you add costs to make it more appealing, that cost has to be absorbed somewhere.
Right.
That's not what you were saying. You could push them somewhere else if they aren't liking the backdrop of that.
Yeah.
Which I think is naturally happening anyway. I mean, people usually come in and tour and they look at things, they ask questions. And, and then the other people come in and go, you need to move that, that, that and that.
Sorry.
And, and that's kind of where I struggle because some of that stuff's a little more. Little, little more than I can handle moving some of that stuff.
Yeah.
That's also why we're proposing to get her some help.
Well, I think we're gonna propose.
I'm sorry?
Sounds like a good plan to me.
We're only asking to give us maybe a year, see what we can do with it.
You're gonna hire somebody for a year? Is that what you're saying?
We'll, we'll evaluate after the year.
Right.
So you tell them in the hiring process that this is, this is a possible.
Well, it's a part-time. The savings, we'll get to the.
Case, then you'd be looking to really increase the all-events line than to decrease it as apparently is.
That's our goal.
So would you want us to change that?
Any more on this? Internal governmental revenues, um, three, count three fifty. That's. It is what it is. Three sixty, the. Or I'm sorry, three sixty-one, charges for services and materials. Any questions on that? Peter. You, you had brought up about potential change in permit fee structure. Do we have anything on that or are we leaving it as is?
I think, I think it's due for a workshop discussion, but I don't have any solid numbers. And until we have that discussion, I don't think.
Yeah, relatively, till this is on ordinance.
It could be a year.
It doesn't have to go to ordinance.
Well, it's just in our fee schedule.
It's just our fee schedule.
Yeah.
But don't we have an ordinance?
No.
You took your numbers out and just say wherever in the fee schedule. Uh, primarily building permits. The cost of building permits, especially with large commercial properties. The primary difference it would make would be in large commercial construction and renovation. Due to larger square footages, our current fee schedule is like a, a very broad brush. I don't believe it matches the, like Lancaster City has a much more comprehensive fee schedule, so. But I don't think it would change our, if I understand it right, and I'd like to discuss this further later, but if I understand it right, I don't think it would change this amount all that much due to, like the, we get a lot of residential building permits. So that would be relatively the same.
Three sixty-two, public safety. Any questions there? You'll notice there is a reduction by half for the task force reimbursement. And that's because as Chief said, Zimmerman is retiring, so we won't have, we will not have anyone immediately going to task force. But the, we anticipate having a task force officer assigned by the middle of the year.
Really?
Yeah, so that's why we have that cut in half.
Yes, question I answer.
Yep. All right. Anything else on three sixty-two? Three sixty-three, highway and streets. Revenues, I don't think. Anything there? Three seventy to three ninety miscellaneous revenue and reimbursements.
The police miscellaneous revenue, what's that? The one thousand nine hundred percent increase?
Civic donations. For example, we received four thousand dollars from the Lions Club or courses from this year.
Any. Any other questions on the revenue? That's where we are. All right, expenditures. Count four hundred, general government expenses. Eric, are you trying for a raise again this year?
Uh, yes.
Do you guys wanna drop out of the election now?
I was actually gonna ask, is there a minimum requirement for the minimum pay?
No, no, there's no minimum.
Could it be zero?
Yes, it could be.
It won't be.
It could be zero.
It should be more.
It could be there? I thought you, I thought it had to have some compensation.
No, you don't. No, it can be zero. I mean, there's.
It's been what it's at for thirty years probably at least.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, the maximum for our size, it just got increased. It's like three thousand dollars or something like that. Yeah, it, it got increased last year. That legislation went through to increase the compensation.
Three thousand dollars a month?
Yeah.
Big city.
Yeah.
But no, you said for our size. Is our size like a range of up to a much larger population?
Um, fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand.
It's based on population, so it's, there's a range.
Yeah, there's a range.
That would establish whatever that rate was.
Yeah.
I think it was six hundred. So I mean, we are outdated, to say.
I'd work for less than hourly wage right here. Not even close to.
I asked for, I won't receive anything.
Yeah.
Well, in favor of it, you guys aren't running again, so you won't receive anything. You know, people could possibly benefit is the people running. What I think it needs to be done.
Anything else on that expenditure?
Guess not.
Four oh one, four oh two, general government administration. Questions on here, this is all.
I just noticed, noticed the overtime rate, clerical salary overtime going down.
Should be zero.
Just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, um. That was. That was down. I mean, we, we keep that line item in there just because if there is overtime, we have to have some place to book it, so.
A question on three eleven, accounting and auditing services. Is there a, was there a specific reason for the sixty-seven percent increase on that?
Cost of them, but.
We, we have, we got a finance manager independent on Brown's accounting.
Is that, is that it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
That's what that is?
Yeah.
I thought that was our auditor.
The auditors included.
So the accounting.
Accounting and auditor.
I had one.
Do you anticipate any ending date for Brown's influence?
We are working towards and it's taking time now, but Brian's doing a terrific job, learning the duties of municipal financing. So we are going to evaluate this by the end of the year to see, you know, what, what our needs are, you know, for next year.
That's great, that's great. Thank you, Brian.
Yep, all right. I screwed up, missed my thing. Four oh two. Um, four oh three, general government tax collections. This is the amount that we pay to National Tax Collection Bureau for collecting our earned income tax and D transfer tax. Four oh four, general government, the solicitor and legal fees. The solicitor is also included in there is the zoning hearing court solicitor as well. The increase for labor council is due to next year, we are, we have one of the.
Non-uniform.
Non-uniform. I couldn't, I couldn't remember which one it was. Next year is non-uniform negotiation, so.
So why the decrease in solicitor fees?
Yeah, they just kind of did the, they just did the averages. Yep.
Around the year, the day we're running under, we just feel from what we have heard since we've been here, is that we can reduce them by that amount. So again, we looked at all the numbers, hopefully we can balance things out. We knew we had to increase and add some funds for labor council. But we feel confident we can cut back on our other solicitor fees.
You're saying solicitor is below a hundred fifteen?
Yes.
Is that because some of those go to capital fund?
No.
No.
We're not paying.
Not paying any of that.
Solicitor fees are the capital.
Hopefully it's gonna be a little more.
The only, the only solicitor fees that come out of capital are the stuff for specific projects. The ones that come out for, for McGinnis.
Such as fires.
Yeah. Yeah.
It surprised me that's that low.
And then, and then this, I'm sorry, we're switching. I'm on the next one. And then, and then this, I'm sorry, we're switching, I'm on the next one, so the same answer would be for the engineering services going down as well.
Yeah, and also with the engineering, we're not gonna have near the number of projects that next year as we have right now.
That's exactly what we discussed. There will be less projects in twenty twenty-six.
If I can interject, uh, we, we just checked some numbers here, so for twenty twenty-five, we budgeted for a hundred and fifteen thousand for solicitor fees. We put in, we were at seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars, so we're proposing we'll come in under budget, and then we'll make an adjustment for next year.
Oh, and on that, Evan just had an increase last year, so he hasn't said if the rate is increasing, has he?
We have not received any notification.
And we haven't received notification about Derek's rate either, okay. Yeah, I just remembered that, we usually get notification from that.
Can I skip back?
Yeah.
Okay.
How far?
Um, four oh two, one forty.
Four oh two, okay.
It says clerical staff, so the accountant person is with the finance, are we saying that the borough manager is then gonna have his own clerical person, because that would be a whole new staff person? It, that used to be, from what I saw before, it used to be the codes, um, admin was there.
Actually, we really.
That was in that line, and now it's been moved to the code, so that.
No, I, originally, the, and I'll just use the names of who was here, okay?
Right, right.
Because that, it's easier to think of it in terms of that.
Right.
So, this four oh two, one forty was Teresa.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That, that was Teresa.
Right.
So, now, that would be Tiffany Toomey.
No, she's codes, the way they have it, she's the codes admin.
No, I thought that was Tiffany Frank was the code.
No, Tiffany Toomey is the codes admin.
Then who is the Teresa?
There isn't a person that's the Teresa.
No, 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 no.
Then, then who?
Part-time person for the codes.
Then who's Tiffany Frank? What, what does she go under, because there, there's one, there's one clerical under the general, and there's one that's under, in this budget, there's one under general and one that's under zoning. Or codes, yeah, we moved it from zoning to codes, that's right. So, we have that, so we have the, the general, the, the general government one, and then we have codes.
The finance.
Well, we did hire another clerical.
That's, that's a part-time, and, um, I don't think that's in here at all.
It's not?
No.
So this isn't a whole nother person?
No.
Okay.
No, so, yeah, there, there's the two, those two, which would be Tiffany and Tiffany. And then, the one Pam for police is in police, the one, um, for public works is in their budget.
And then you have.
Yeah, Lisa.
And then, what, is there, and there a zoning one or something, there's another one, I thought.
That's the one, yeah.
Oh, that's the one you took out?
That's the one.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, that's how it, yep, I, I know, because I was going down.
I was looking at the other one when I compared stuff, and it didn't, so.
I'll also mention that the part-time contract expired, we did not renew that.
Oh.
So we just have two admins in the office, that's correct.
So why did you not renew?
Uh, we felt it wasn't needed.
So, last year's budget did not have a codes admin in the budget. So, anything that pertained to her was actually in the, the borough manager's admin.
No, no, that was, it was in zoning.
You're correct, it was in zoning.
It was in zoning.
We already had one in zoning, and we should have had one in code, and none under borough manager. Frank is code for zoning, and Toomey was code. So, last year, there was no admin in code, now there is.
No, not on this budget, there's one under general, which is under the borough manager, and one in the account for codes.
And one under.
No, there isn't, not in this budget.
So what is the other Tiffany doing then, if she's not zoning, what is she doing?
Tiffany Frank is assigned to.
That's what they're saying.
To zoning.
Zoning? Or codes, right? No, Tiffany's code.
We have no clerical staff in this.
Right.
Here's, we have public safety up, uh, there is a clerical salary, one forty.
That's Pam.
Pam, right? Sometimes you put names.
This is for codes.
Oh, it's codes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Can we put names in the next episode, so we didn't pass any?
We know what this is.
Yours planning in zoning, you'll note under one forty clerical salary?
Yep.
It's a negative.
Yeah.
So that was removed.
Okay, so that was taken out of there.
That's correct.
Yes. I thought, I mean, I've been through this.
I just wanted to, okay.
So the clerical staff.
Yeah, I looked through this.
There are Pam, and we have Lisa, correct?
I wasn't aware of the zoning one.
That's correct.
Yep.
I didn't realize you were taking the zoning one out, that's my fault, I didn't realize that's what you were doing.
No, I know.
I didn't know what the plan was, so.
Trust me, I was like.
Yeah, I'm trying to look, and I.
More appropriately reflected the work they do as well.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So what's under finance? It's under the finance, but what, do they have a, uh?
They have the accountant.
Yeah, that's the accountant.
Go think of the word, brain dead.
Yeah.
I understand, brain went flat.
Alright. So we're good there.
Sorry, now we can move right ahead.
Alright. Oh wait, I forget where we're at.
My apologies.
Oh, four oh two, three ten, borough code maintenance, I have expressed that I want to make sure we have money in there. Next year, we have to get our code, we have to make sure everything is codified. All this piecemeal stuff is not working out, we have some stuff that's codified, some that isn't.
Right.
You know, it needs to be codified.
Do you have a figure?
I do not, um, because that's something that, that E code tells us.
We can check with them.
Yeah, check with general code.
If I had to guess at this point, I would say ten thousand dollars.
That's what I think, too.
It's maybe in that range, I would think.
Yeah, it is.
So we can, we can reach out to them.
Yep. Alright. Four oh, back to four oh eight, engineering, that is there, four oh nine, um, buildings and properties. Any questions there?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, three fifty-two, the insurance premium expenses going up three thousand percent. It says three thousand, the insurance, I need to put this out.
Oh, yeah, this is my fault, this is, this, this one is totally my fault, but that one seventy-five is correct. That insurance premium expenses, last year, when I was looking at it, I inadvertently zeroed out that, that line. But, and it shouldn't have been, because that is the line where all of our, all of the liability insurance falls. All of the property insurance, you know, vehicle, all of that stuff goes into there, and I zeroed it out inadvertently last year. So they put it back to where it should be, and so that's why it looks like a huge increase.
So it wasn't a hundred thousand last year, it was probably close to like one forty?
No, it was like one seventy.
We're gonna spend close to one seventy this year.
Yeah.
So it was like that last year.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, because I know you talked about insurance being up twenty percent, I wasn't sure about that topic.
No.
This is property insurance, food, insurance, bonds, um.
Yeah, the, um, the health insurance stuff is, well, it's in each, each individual, um, department, there's a line for.
Look at one ninety-six, under four oh nine, one ninety-six.
Yeah.
Hundred thousand, right?
Yep, that's what it is.
That's a bad example, that's, uh, that's reduced.
But, yeah, that, it's, it, they all say employee insurance coverage premiums.
You look at four ten, one ninety-six, under police.
Yeah, alright, so now we're in four ten, public safety.
Uh, I, I do want to ask about, I'm not quite sure what the minimum requirements are for raises for police, but I want to ask about why the sergeants and porpoises have a twenty-five percent increase to their salaries next year?
No, it's, it's not a twenty-five percent increase, that's the, uh, difference from last year to this, this budget.
Yeah.
So it is a contractual increase of four percent for each employee.
Yes.
Why, okay.
Because there were, there, there, it was changes in staffing.
Yes.
Year over year.
Promotions.
Yeah, promotions and things like that, that, that happened, there were some that, that had, that positions that weren't filled, that were, so. Yep. Um, anything else? Oh, God, O I C.
I have one more for, uh, four ten, um, which was the, I saw that the overtime was being brought down in like most of the other departments, but it wasn't for the police. I was just asking what the thought process was for that.
You can eliminate overtime anywhere but the police.
Why?
Because we're short staffed?
Because we're short, and also, um, with the number, with the number of officers we have that, um, have been here, that are, the tenure is, is so much, they have all this vacation, it causes, you know, that, the other part of this is, it is very, very difficult right now to get, well, it's difficult to get officers in general, but it's extremely even more difficult to get part-time officers that we would normally rely on to supplement, and we just can't seem to get part-time officers.
We are anticipating at least three retirements next year, so, uh, we are going to have to rely on our existing staff to help augment shifts until we get, uh, get back to with personnel.
Right, and, you know, they, when they're gearing up for retirement, they have accrued vacation and accrued time off, that they're taking off. So that's why the O I C is, is staying higher because of those anticipated.
It said, there's an issue with the way it's calculated, Heather, we realized that, um, the way the previous, uh, finance manager was calculating it, it was the difference issues including, that's why that number was so low.
Oh.
Fifteen thousand and twenty-three, I believe, and then when, uh, when Brown took over, uh, then that whole number went into that category. So we are not comfortable at this point in time.
Okay.
With modifying that.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Yeah, I.
That was gonna be my next question.
Yep, okay. Any, anything else on four ten?
I see the repair of radios has gone down, with the new radios.
Yes, yes.
Four eleven, public safety fire. Fire hydrant, works, comp insurance, I mean, this is, so, I had him put on, I had them put on here, the one eleven, and then a new line item for fire apparatus fund at one eighty-nine.
Yeah, that's something you really need to take a look at.
In, in what, in what way?
You have projects, you have things happening within the next year, so sales of properties, that always going to go into capital. And when it's all going into the capital now, there, granted, there are projects, but sometimes these projects may need to be moved a little bit, uh, based on what you have available, but I was talking to, to, uh, Chief and Ron about this. You have a problem with your general fund, and you have some money that just want to come into capital, and you can't take capital money and put it into the general fund, you can take general money and put it in capital. What you can do is take general items. And put them into capital. For example, uh, you may want to, I mean, this is going to take a little bit of discussion, a little bit of work, but you may want to buy the fire truck as a capital project. You may want to, to finance the, the, the fire truck as a capital project. Some other project may have to take a little bit of a bump back, but you're gonna pull X amount of thousand dollars out of your general expenditures and put it into capital where you have an infructus of money. You know, this is one big item that you can, that you can show, you know, to nickel and dime things, sometimes isn't worth it, but this is a lot of money that you might be able to make a change and, and draw down on your general fund. But you need to sit down and talk with the fire company and see how theirs wanted, how they were planning on structuring it, because I don't remember it all, but, and, in other words, were they figuring on paying it over a period of time?
Yes.
So, here's, here's how they structured it, they said, the one eighty-nine, and the one, let's just round everything out to four hundred thousand. That was going to continue to be from here on out. Because this current one eighty-nine increase is paying for the equipment they have currently, and that's supposed to be paid off in four to five years, and by then, they'll have the new ladder truck, and in that fragment, this will become that payment. So there is no reduction, the only way we can actually get around this is, like you said, one capital expenditure where we just buy it outright.
Yeah, and that, we, we had a conversation about that, that's, to me, that's a, a better deal, buying that truck outright, using the money you've got coming in. Maybe a project that you have planned, may have to get bumped back a year, maybe two years or something like that, you keep them on the books, and that's where you gotta get your managers together and look at all your projects, and, and set up a five-year plan as to how you're gonna do these projects. You don't scrap them, you don't take them away.
Right.
But you may have to bump them back a year in order to do this, so, so you buy that fire truck, and you get that, that expenditure out of the general, you know, you get that thing out of there, and, and that's what made a significant difference.
They are willing to talk, too, about buying the fire truck, at first, they were not, but I talked with Jared, and he said they are willing to have that conversation.
About what?
Us outright buying the fire truck.
Yeah.
He said at first, they didn't want to do that, but they will have that conversation now. That's what he told me when I stepped in.
In my opinion, I understand what you're saying. I, I, I totally understand what you're saying, um, but we're not in a position where we can absorb this, this increase. It's, if it is one time, I accept that. But this is a continual four hundred thousand dollars, and that's going to.
Three hundred.
Three hundred, three hundred, I'm sorry, I missed the.
To me, if I was, you know, I, I hear what you're, both sides are saying, to me, if we would move to the decision to purchase it as a capital item, then to me, that one eighty-nine increase has to be revisited, and certainly should go back to zero.
It would.
For certain, for at least a certain amount of time, like ten years at least.
Thousand on your general fund.
Right. At least it takes. So you're helping, you're helping in general.
But even if we purchased the fire truck outright, they still need that additional hundred and eighty-nine thousand for the next four years to pay for the current payment.
So that's, that's, that's a conversation we have to have with them.
Yeah.
If we're gonna step up and, and do the capital expenditure.
No, 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 I don't think that's right, the hundred, because they told me the hundred and eleven, the hundred and eleven is what you're paying for their current.
Yeah, so the one eighty-nine is paying, one eighty-nine is paying so they can get the down payment.
Yeah, but no, they said they need the, the, they need three hundred thousand to make their budget.
Right.
Yeah, so one eighty-nine of that was to help with.
Two trucks now.
No, they're not paying on the other truck now. They're paying on their current truck.
Trucks, there are two of them you're paying for.
Right, they're paying for those, but.
The one eleven is covered. And in four years, they're gonna buy a third one.
Right.
So, these two will be gone, and this will be coming on.
Right, but they need the one eighty-nine in addition to. Right, but they need the one eighty-nine in addition to the one eleven, regardless of the vehicle.
That's not the way I, I think you need to sit down and have a conversation with them, and I, and I truly believe you got approximately, just approximately, because if you buy it outright, the rate went down, the cost of it went down significantly, so I think you need to have that conversation, I truly believe you're, you're in around, you want to take in around two hundred thousand dollars out of your general fund expenditures that you're planning on right now.
Not just for the year.
I don't think we are.
The cost goes down on the truck if they prepay it, but it, it's not on the schedule to be even made until twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah, but the cost is whatever they sign in the contract, so if they sign it tomorrow, well, they did sign it already, so that place is locked in.
Right.
The money that's in the capital fund is not free money. It's, it's no worse of an investment coming out of the general fund than it is the capital fund.
No.
Because if we take capital fund monies that have been made through the management of them and put them into an depreciating asset, that is mismanagement of capital funds. We cannot do that and waste the gain that we've made from good opportunities that we've taken in the past.
You're not wasting the gain, you're, you're, you're doing another, put it this way, you're doing another project.
Fair enough, but we currently are maintaining, if we want to talk about getting money back to our general fund, we're currently maintaining a bond that's costing us how much every year? It would be a better use of funds to pay off that bond and then have an extra hundred some thousand a year that we could then put towards a fire truck.
You can't pay off the fund with capital money.
I'm just saying, no matter how you.
It was bought, it was, it was a capital, it was taken out for capital expenses.
Well, you could, yeah.
So we can.
But, but you can, there's things that you can bump back a year or two and take care of some other problems. And right now, your problem is monies in your general fund. And you can't put any in other than increasing taxes or somehow increasing revenue in. That's the only way you can get money in your general fund.
And if we use our.
But you have a way now of getting money into your capital fund, so why not use that capital fund for a capital purchase?
If we use our capital funds to purchase a depreciating asset, I'm not saying it's a bad thing to buy a fire truck. However, if we use those capital funds and then they are unavailable, they're spent. And I think this capital fund needs to be managed wisely and look at what can the councils, future councils invest in that would put money back into the general fund, that has to be considered, what, what can the capital investments be, um, capital expenditures, what can they be spent on that is a return on its investment and not something that's going down in value?
That's why you need to look at them, that's why I say, you get your management team together, you look at that, all the projects that are, that are planned and the monies, you look at that and see where, and you say, okay, this year I was going to spend X amount of dollars, and I don't want to, I don't want to get any specifics, but this year I'm going to spend X amount of dollars for this project. Can that project wait a year? Yeah, okay, put it back, buy the fire truck.
The only project really that we have that's not accounted for or, you know, not happening is the new public works building. We don't have all these projects, I mean, yes, we have Walnut Street, but we're not paying for that, we have a grant for that.
You got, you got.
I don't think so.
Yes.
You got Columbia Crossing, you got Phase Three River Park.
Well, they're not, they're not planned, we, we said the river park can't happen because of the bridge.
But I'm, I'm saying, when those projects were brought up, the monies coming in from sales was, was slid to them. You had money, you, you basically allocated money that you were going to receive to, to projects and said, oh, I don't have any capital. Well, push them back a little bit and use, use that capital.
I think the, the only one that.
You've got to do something to take something out of your general, you've got to get that out of general.
But I don't think we were counting on sliding money from sales of properties into the river park or anything like that, it was being counted to go toward the public works facility.
Does public works have to move that fast? I don't think, I don't think, I don't think that.
Yes.
It has to because we're, we have the, uh, the public share grant that, of a million dollars that has to be spent within three years.
You got a million dollars.
And we have a million, almost a million from the sale of the property up on Blue Lane. We're counting on potentially using the RACP towards the second phase and, and matching funds here and there, Derek can explain it all, it's, it's a puzzle piece that fits together and the timing of it all has to go in one fell swoop.
Possibly around a four million dollar project, which I don't think is necessary.
Not a four million dollar project.
That's what I understand.
And the sale of the wastewater treatment plant is contingent on us getting out of that property fully.
I have four.
No.
No, that's the split, the second half of it, yes.
Yes, the second half of it.
You can level that property up there, just like you did with Guinness, put the road in, put a salt shed up there, and use that million dollars you were talking about, you have to use, and then you can multiply that project for a little bit until you take care of some other things.
Okay, if you say that, then you have to also have a plan of how you're going to get money back into the capital fund for that project.
Yes.
So how?
You've got other products, you've got other properties you're selling, you're talking about one.
We only have so many properties that we're selling.
You're going to sell half of that up there, you're going to sell the Columbia number one, and you've got something that's going to go on out with Guinness. I'm not saying you do, I'm saying sit down, let your management team sit down and go over this and see what you can do. You may have a better deal by getting that fire truck out of general fund into, into the other fund. You may have a better deal, you got to sit down and look at it, this is the first draft of a budget that you, you need to take a look at this stuff, because the only chance you have in your general fund is to raise taxes, unless you get something out of there, get that hundred eighty-nine or whatever it is out of there. That'll give you a little breathing room, that's a half a mil.
I have the capital fund up right now, I'm just looking for the construction costs for Ridge Avenue. It is budgeted at a million and a half in twenty twenty-five and two point five million in twenty twenty-six, so that does add up to four if the numbers are correct. I'm just trying to look at all the things that are in here, Maple Bar, New Street.
I think, I think, you know, I think that whole project needs to be reevaluated.
I mean, I, I think it's not like I disagree that they need a new fire truck, but what is the actual cost of maintaining the current ladder truck?
I'm not so sure they need a new one, I've got to go with the fellows.
We, I don't think we knew that number, do we?
Because if that's, you know, maybe, does it cost twenty-five thousand a year, is it costing seventy-five thousand a year? Without having that number on hand, what is it?
I don't know what you're getting at.
I guess I'm getting at, if we don't have money for it, it doesn't make it a good purchase whether we use uh, capital funds or otherwise, because one of the things that he brought up was just the need for more cash flow to maintain their current fleet, purchase the new one, and then save up for future replacements, so that they would have cash on hand to be able to just make that lump sum purchase.
The number one goal, you know, is to replace the ladder truck.
Right.
And I don't know, I don't know if this is a fact or not, this is something I heard, okay, so I treat it as this is something I heard of. A question, once the fire truck gets fifteen years old, they refuse to insure on their liability. You believe in fire, Eric, you ever hear anything like that?
No, um, because they sell used trucks, I think it becomes more of just a cost, a repair cost, especially with ladder trucks, because of the hydro system.
I mean, yes, Frank.
I come here to educate myself, and I think I get more confused because I think you don't get around. We are talking about the ladder truck.
Yes.
Two point two million.
Yes.
Yes.
I listened to the presentation and everything, and hearing what Peter has to say, the job that he does, he's about a lot of equipment he can evaluate and things like that, but I've never heard nobody on council saying, do they need a new fire truck? Just that they need one, that I always pride as a fire company, when taking care of their equipment, that keep it inside, how did it get rusty that's kept inside? How much rust is on it? How many of you went to see the truck? I don't know if you know what you're looking at, but did you get an evaluation for the borough, for the council, for the taxpayers? Do you have that to show, well, here's how bad that truck is? What, what do you have to back that up?
It did make that.
I'm hearing on the street, the word on the street, how much time I hear, I've talked to people there, I've talked to people too, they're saying the fire company could buy this outright, they have money to buy this outright. Also, do they need it? Do they want a new fire truck that when they have a parade or whatever, hey, our fire truck's greater than yours, ours is nicer than yours, I'm hearing this, this is what people tell me, they're like, they're saying, and some people that used to be fire company members, they know what they have, how well did you investigate this? All I've heard from council was, how do we get them the money? How do we get that fire truck? I don't hear, is it new or neither? Uh, you're talking about, you know, maintain that, why would it cost twenty-five thousand a year to maintain?
He don't know, I'm just saying.
I don't know what it costs, he just said that the costs have been rising so much that they, that they want to get a new one.
Did anybody, did you look at?
No.
I can't understand this kept inside, how did we get the rush?
I don't think it's rust, Frank.
They didn't say rust.
I don't think it's rust, I think it's the, the.
The mechanics.
The mechanical parts of it. The ladder, the operation of the ladder, or anything else.
I don't know, I, I haven't looked at it, maybe I only know what I've looked at.
Well, no, I think you raised a darn good point, Frank, that maybe that's something that has to go into the, to the conversation.
Am I right? This would probably be used for the true high-rise.
Oh, it would be used for, for anyone.
Yeah, not just the high-rise buildings.
High-rises, this is the one with the.
I mean, it would be used for even, even residences.
Yeah, they said there were a lot of buildings that they couldn't reach currently with the, the long.
Frank, we, I just wanted to respond back to, we, I, that question myself, and I know others did, about what is it? When we had a meeting with the fire company way back when, when they showed us that, I was kind of like, and I asked, I even asked at the last meeting, we talked at, at the, uh, at our, at our work session, I asked them about, you know, how, how much you're going to get when you sell the new one, hundred thousand dollars, they said, well, boy, the way you guys keep, keep clean, how you keep, how you maintain your equipment, somebody's going to get a hell of a good buy there.
Yeah.
For a hundred grand.
They don't sell it for a hundred thousand either.
Well, whatever they get, they're getting a heck of a good buy.
I remember when the guys resell it.
Yeah, when they resell it.
Right, mhm.
Well, I, I just, I just want to hear, do they need a new truck? Why can't it be refurbished, what needs to be done, what would that cost? Do you have no, nothing to back up? All I hear is, how can you get the money so we can construct? If it's needed, and I'd be the first one to say, hey, that's what we got to do.
But, so, so Frank, let me into this though, so I go to Jared and I say, do you need this truck, which we've, we have asked him multiple times.
Multiple times.
And he said, yes, so what, what do we need to do to prove that they need a truck? Because I'll tell you, I, I can go out there and look at a truck and I don't know what I'm looking at. So we're relying on the fire department to say, yes, we need the truck because, you know, so what are, what are you looking at from us to be able to say it?
You should have an independent survey, somebody that knows these, you, you give us a good analysis of this truck, how big things are, how long would last, how much service will give us, that's what they don't have that for the taxpayer. They don't have the backup when you're going.
Frank, isn't that what our fire chief can do?
Yes.
I think it's a fair point, though, if we're going to be the, if we're going to be the financing for it, anybody, any bank, anyone who goes, takes out a loan from the bank, the bank asks the details about why, what do you need the money for?
Well, couldn't they prove what they're spending on a two-service every year, sure, absolutely.
Right.
Maintaining that equipment, they should have that proof to show us that that's what they're spending, and if it is adding up over the years, we could look at that and say, see, I'm, concrete evidence is going to say, okay, we're, we're having an increase in servicing and maintenance vehicles on that vehicle.
And we did that for many years when the borough owned its own police vehicles, and now we, now lease them, but when we used to own them, Jack used to give very good records, maintenance records, so it's let us know, okay, we need to change, you know, it doesn't have to be the newest, the oldest one, that's the worst one, it could be the one that's, one that's five years old is no problem, one that's two years old is a, is a lemon, that's the one you move out, and we've done that for years, so I, yeah, definitely did. I, I know they did mention some numbers way back when about, about how the rising costs of their
Right.
maintenance of it was, but I, again, I never really saw any concrete numbers either, because again, like you.
Last time we were here, you said, where's the evidence, where's, where's the proof that this stuff is happening?
If you say that you, that puts up twenty-five thousand dollars maintenance, and what we don't know, nobody here knows, what, what kind of maintenance is on the new one? And you're, you're talking about the borough buying that outright, am I right?
One of the reasons why they're looking, if they purchase it sooner, that two point two drops down to around, I believe it was one six or one seven, it's quite a bit of savings.
Buy it outright.
If you buy it, yes, it's a lot of savings.
There's a lot of questions, I don't, I don't have any, I'm just listening to you, you're representing that to taxpayers.
Yeah, right, and that's, that's what I'm doing, I'm looking at the overall picture, if you do that, you're saving somebody in the borough six hundred thousand.
I, I think that's the point in this first go-around with the budget, it's mid-October, we have to be in any year, there's a lot of questions here on that, Frank, exactly, and, and how to finance it or what you're going to do. We have time to ferret this out, and maybe I'll say a more educated decision on which way to go. And, and your comments are, are very good.
I, I often thought about more now, looking at it, I don't know if there's a good answer or not, but I mean, I got some tackles for it, but I don't know if I did too, you know, looking at fire help. Just on that, thanks, anyway.
All right, anything else on four eleven? Yep. All right, four thirteen, public safety code compliance. Um, this in here is slated for an additional full-time code, code officer.
Yes.
Questions, comments?
And that includes removing the part-timers.
That's what I was going to say, is that taken away?
If the part-time will remain.
And the last time we talked to you.
You have to take the other one out.
So we're going with one as opposed to, or we're going with one and a half as opposed to a half?
That's right.
Any questions there? Any questions there?
Can we just have some more information about why the, why we need to go from a half to one and a half? Uh, code inspectors or compliance officers? Some more background for that.
Not enough bodies to cover what you want, what the public expects to be covered. I mean, the amount of, uh, emailed and phoned in complaints that they get, that they have to respond to, it's impossible. For the one and a half and the, they have the one-
For the half person.
The guy that's part-time isn't doing the real meat and potatoes. He's doing grass and weeds and stuff like that. But that's, that's one person doing all that. And Paula helps out, she can, she has her job to do as well.
Yeah, I was just wasn't sure if there was another reason for that.
No, we often get beat up that, oh, codes isn't catching these people with all the trash and codes isn't doing this, codes isn't doing that. This is a way to give them the-
Step them up.
Code's got beat.
The staff that need, you know.
It only gets you once.
I got had ready to.
It gets you once, it won't get you-
I have a nice payment house, thanks.
Anything else on four thirteen? Four fourteen, planning and zoning. Anything else, anything there? Public safety emergency management. Four fifteen. Four twenty-six, public works recycling collection and disposal. And just, um, just so you guys are aware, um, because it's not, it may not be intuitive. The recycling staff that's here, that is one member of our publics, um, public works crew. We put them there, that recycling, this recycling line, that's the borough farm recycling facility. That's, I always wondered that too. All right, uh, four twenty-nine, public works. The wastewater treatment plant. Hopefully that will be gone.
That would cut all of the wastewater, the WWTP expenses, right?
Yes, well, and even, even the ones that are there are netted out by, um, the revenue. Because the lease we have on there is a triple zero lease. The tenant pays for everything. But for the purpose of the budget, we have to show it in the revenue and the expenditure, so. Four thirty, public works, the highway department.
The public works lead, that's a, I presume a promotion from highway personnel?
Yes. Yes, and that, um, that's being done, be, it, we're not adding a position, but we're promoting someone from the highway personnel. That's because we're thinking about succession planning in all of our departments where we didn't necessarily have them. So, having someone promoted to the lead is, helps with, you know, giving Jake some leeway. So, he has someone he should be able to rely on if he needs to take off.
The next one, he's excellent.
Yeah.
So Jake, will that be a non-union position?
It's a union position that's in the contract.
Can we name it something else? Wouldn't be a union position.
No. No, because it's already classified in the contract.
Okay.
Any questions on?
Well, I think you might have mentioned this earlier on, or tonight. That reduction, significant reduction on employee work and comp each month?
You know, we're always a savings and it should be reflected in each department. There again, there again, has to go department by department because there's different classifications as to what we pay for work and comp. If you know what they do, there's like clerical, uh, with police officers, of course, the highest, the public work employees are right behind them as far as rate. So, we get one overall bill and it's broken down of how it's rated. We then need to try to break that down per department of what amounts appropriately put in each department.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned that early on tonight.
Yes.
And this is reflecting that.
That's correct.
Yep. Yeah, and the reason we have that, we, the reason we have that reduction is because of our track record and, and everything else. And the, um, the, the safety meetings that we, that, you know, our employees have and, and everything else. And trying to keep our employees safe and so forth. Um, because of our, our record, we've had a rate go down and we've also had a reduction in the percentage that, um, not just the rate itself, but also the percentage that we pay too.
Being safe will-
That's a big thank you to all of them.
Yes, that is, that's huge, that's wonderful.
I assume the overtime line here is a similar situation to the police because it's a union position like-
Yeah. And, I mean, our, our big thing there is, you know, how bad's the winter going to be?
It's still a little.
That's, that's our overtime. Yeah.
They're flooding down.
Yeah, that's true. This year we had a lot of rain situations. Four thirty, I think we're good there. Four thirty-three, public works, traffic control and street lights. Most of, most of the, uh, lighting costs and so forth are coming out of liquid fuels. When we get there, I have some notes about liquid fuels though. Um, four forty-four, excuse me, market house. This is where we have the, excuse me, the manager salary and then also the, uh, part-time, well, excuse me, assistant.
What has truly helped with this is Bonnie has agreed to waive her insurance, medical insurance type.
It's very nice.
Questions?
A few meetings back, assessing, um, the council meeting. And instead there was, uh, someone that, that brother that, you know, dressed them out. And there was a lot of things missing. Were we after that? And did anybody ever-
He's talking about Mindy.
Anything like that?
Oh.
Does it remember that coming up with the meeting, Jared?
He's talking about when Mindy Eisenhower came in and spoke. Yes. Her name was Mindy, yes.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we're, I don't know that anything formal was submitted, that there was stuff missing.
Well, I only know because of the assistant came to the line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was also back when it was a shared kitchen, so it was kind of hard to pinpoint how it became missing.
And my other question is, I've heard that, uh, the kitchen was in real, real bad shape now. I don't know how it got like that or whatever. And currently if we refurbish, does anybody know what we spend on that?
I don't think it was refurbished. I think we just had it cleaned and some things needed repaired.
There were, I think the maintenance was not kept up at one time, like the convection ovens, those kinds of things.
Yeah.
I think that's probably what they were talking about and-
Well, Linda told me that there's a lot of-
Yeah, the dishwasher, there were a lot, a lot of maintenance had to happen. And, uh, all that's been taken care of, so. Or at least what I'm aware of anyway.
Yeah. Any other questions on four forty-four?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Five hours a week is your part-time employee.
That's not planned for every week, it's rather a month as needed.
The phone and internet for the market house, is that a separate, um, entity? Like a separate address? Does it need to be?
Yes.
Okay. We can't do any techy things and link the systems?
I, as far as I know, no, we couldn't.
I know we tried at least twice way back when and just, you think if it's across the street, but I-
Yeah.
Maybe it's because of buildings.
We have enough, we have a hard enough time keeping the internet up here in this town.
But not keeping your internet up.
I just didn't know, uh, like our tech solutions company, if they've ever looked at that. But anyhow, I'll let that, let that go.
When was that last, uh, sort of, you said you previously talked for getting?
I'm sure they did it since then, but when I was in council back twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, I know twenty nineteen for sure we tried it. We actually brought in, I don't know, they're on Centerville Road, I'm not sure if we use them anymore.
No, they're, they're out of business.
Using a new company called City.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we use and they, they spent hours here and just couldn't get them.
Anything else on four forty-four? Four fifty, or, uh, boards and committees, Harb. Um, while I'm thinking of it and while I say Harb, want to make sure I throw this out there. For next year, Harb is requesting a meeting with council, um, to discuss. It, they have things that, um, they'd recommend, you know, changes in the ordinance or whatever. They want to know, um, they're looking for more direction from council. So, I suggested that maybe like February time, we can have them at a workshop, have them come in. Um, because that will also be a time for us to say, we want, to give them the marching orders that we want them to put together, the, you know. Some sort of, sit at, some sort of, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Guidance pamphlets for, for residents that we can mail out and say, you're all in the Harb district and all that kind of stuff.
No, bloody turd, you jacks, really?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so, but I, I wanted to get it out there because I saw Brian at the, um, at the watershed, the act one sixty-seven meeting I was at last week. And he mentioned it to me there, so. Parks and Rec. Community programs, what is that? Four fifty, four oh one.
Is that the movies in the park?
No.
Trying to get for look up any detail on that. Oh, one, four fifty, four oh one.
We'll take it. I don't think they're paid for it.
No, we didn't. That came, just came out of Parks and Rec operational. That came out of, um, four fifty, three oh one, yeah.
So, we'll just make that sixty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no idea what.
Quite possibly that line item could have been used for the borough to support maybe national night owl events such as that.
Nah.
Yeah, you got your own line in there for that.
Yeah, I'm seeing one from a borough standpoint. The boroughs had stands there.
Yeah. I, I don't know.
I don't know.
That's a number there. I think we haven't spent anything to date. Pam was here and we were going to movies and there wasn't a Parks and Rec one area. So, it was coming out of that.
I see.
We budgeted fifteen hundred dollars there last year, so.
Yeah.
But how much did we spend?
None.
They're saying nothing, they haven't spent it.
Yeah.
I think it's a dead-
Yeah, I think that's a deadline, yeah.
Move it.
Yep.
Move it too.
Looks like it, I don't mind.
All right, uh, four fifty-two.
I'm not, uh, I don't represent the, the lovers of cats that were here tonight. However, I would like to see possibly switching around. We raised the library five thousand this year. I'd kind of like to keep the cat action team at three. And then raise the library three thousand. I just, we have such trouble getting volunteers in at the, in these community-driven things like the Parks and Rec. And things that are, these are, these, uh, whatever, where we need volunteers, it's so hard to get volunteers, except for the CCAT. So, I'd like to see them continue and it's a good, uh, community-driven program.
Fifteen hundred from four fifty-four oh one. About fifteen hundred bucks.
Oh, there you go. It's a community program.
Yeah. Hold on, anyone else?
Well, the problem I have with that is that at the inception of it, everyone agreed that it was on the condition that each year that would decrease and decrease. Until they were able to take it over themselves.
Now that fifteen hundred, you decreased it five hundred dollars from last year.
And so, and that's really what we've been doing each, each year. We've been decreasing it a little bit at a time.
Sharon.
I had something to say about in general for four fifty-two, for that whole section. I think all of these, um, organizations are important to this community as a whole. But what is important, one taxpayer might not be as important to another in regard to each program. Like I'm, I think the cat team is more important than the normal non-federal, I'm just saying. And I don't, I think they're all important, but, um, I don't agree with cutting any of them. But that being said, I think if you were going to cut one, well, one was the only one. But if you were going to reduce one, that's a better word maybe for that. I think you should have said, let's reduce them all by fifty percent. If you're broke and you don't want to do that now, again, I'm going to say, I don't think twenty-nine thousand totally has to do with all these program contributions was out of line. And I think it's sort of pathetic that we as a borough don't have twenty-nine thousand worth of debt. You've been referred to them this year, like still cut one back. To me, the whole thing didn't make sense. If you wanted to, to say, all of these programs are important to us as a community, but we can't fund them. I think the fair thing to do would have been simply to say, we can't fund like we did last year. We're going to have to cut you all to half. You know, you, you talked about this whiteboard about saving money and tonight I heard about spending money. And, you know, increasing council's compensation came up. And on the very next page, we're giving more money now to Wrightsville for fireworks.
No, that's, that's our Park and Rec, Wrightsville's not doing them. That's, that's the three hundred. But that's not going to Wrightsville, that's doing our own fireworks.
They're doing them herself.
For the Columbia three hundred.
Wrightsville's not doing them.
When the page that said Wrightsville.
Yeah, they're not doing them.
I'm saying when, when you read-
No, yeah, I know, they're not doing them.
Okay, so what happens if it said eight to ten? So, the ten that says-
That's going to three hundred. The three hundredth committee will be doing the fireworks. That money's going to them.
But then on this paper it said Wrightsville.
Right, it needs to be changed, that was an error.
Yeah, that was an error.
Yes, that'll be changed.
That was our mistake, we apologize. We'll get that one fixed.
Right, it was.
Because you contributed to Wrightsville.
That's what we did.
We contributed to Wrightsville this year because we didn't have any. So, that's why it says Wrightsville in there. Because this year, we contributed to the fireworks they had in Wrightsville because we didn't do them.
Was that eight thousand?
Yes, yes.
So, I'm just saying, so you're not going to contribute to Wrightsville's anymore, is that what you're saying?
Not as long as Columbia has them, no.
Okay, that's, I mean, I supported that initially, I thought it was a good idea to have a fireworks display, and, and share with them, but since we're talking about cutting back, I thought, well, fireworks, you know, we're just wasting money going up the air for one night, going to be giving it to a community program that works all year, not just one. So, anyway, um, I think that's it, thank you.
I agree with that, Sharon, about the fireworks, and I also agree with what she says about, you know, in comparison to our whole budget, thirty two thousand dollars isn't really a lot of money. And, which reminds me, like, I would like to bring up again the Stephen Smith Foundation, and just remind everybody that they wanted to make money so that they could access, I'm not sure if I get these words wrong, just correct me, but they've been given a grant, that they have to come up with so much money before that money can be accessed and they can begin the building, and I, I, I know it was mentioned in passing, and I don't, I, I could be wrong, but can we give to the revitalization or refurbishing of a historical building, can we as that borough give money for that?
As long as it's owned by a church.
As long as it's owned by a church.
Oh, really?
Exactly.
Correct.
See, that, that information they didn't tell me.
That's, hold up.
And I, I agree, you know, I, I mean, I hear what you're saying about the twenty nine thousand, or thirty two, or thirty four, whatever it ends up being, you know, it doesn't sound like a lot, but I would tell you also, you know, this is common, so we do, you know, as a council, I've always felt like it was our responsibility to do our part as well, and, and help out as much as we could for their, their requests, whoever you need to understand, I'm not gonna mention any, but if you dig and do search on Pennsylvania, you will find boroughs and townships and cities, not, I'm not saying cities, boroughs and townships, that they don't contribute anything to what they do. They're, they have, they have community organizations that take care of all that, so they don't even, they don't even do them, so the fact that we are still doing them, you know, should be seen as a plus.
Yep.
What do you think as far as CCAT goes? Initially, when it was started, it wasn't, we would back, we would diminish it each year, until they were, they solely supported themselves, so last year we, we gave three thousand, we took it down to two thousand, and the year before that was at five thousand, and we took it down to three.
Last year they asked for five, and we gave them three.
Three, but the first, how much did we give them?
Actually, last year they asked for eighty four hundred dollars.
Oh, really?
Yes, they asked for eighty four hundred dollars last year.
But what did we contribute the first year they started?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Yeah, because there was, they needed additional traps and, and things like that. So we had purchased the traps and so forth.
And they were taking it to more expensive veterinarian.
Cheaper.
Actually, cheaper.
Cheaper.
At first, though, there was, over in York.
Yeah, they're cheaper.
Really?
Yeah, Columbia's more expensive.
It's only twenty five dollars at the York SPCA.
I know it's, at one of the places they were taking them were, were more expensive than.
Columbia?
Columbia.
No, Columbia's the most.
That must be.
I mean, I don't have, I don't have an issue giving them fifteen hundred dollars.
Well, we just found fifteen hundred dollars, so.
No, I'm saying a total of fifteen hundred dollars, because we gave them three and we're cutting it back.
Whatever, we're wasting too much time on this line, I'm just trusting us to two thousand.
I don't think we're wasting time, Pete.
Arguing over two thousand dollars, I think, is a waste of time, however, the fire truck, not a waste of time, that's almost two hundred thousand dollars a year proposed.
I think every decision is important.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
Every line I imagine.
So, well, I, I'll go with the fifteen hundred if everyone agrees.
I think you guys had a good solution with taking the four oh one to the CCAT. I mean, that's still a reduction from the three thousand if you feel like you have to reduce it, but I also think that it would be important to lay out a more specific timeline to CCAT about the reduction.
We've been telling them that, Alan Landsman, who is in charge of that, we have been telling him that we were going to continue to reduce, that they needed to be able to self-sustain themselves, this is nothing new, we discussed this with him every time he came here. Whether that was relayed, I don't know, but it is something that was discussed every single time. So it's not, not like it's something brand new.
And it's not that we want to eliminate, we do value the service in the community, and we do not want it to be eliminated, and the, the clinic will, or the shelter, will, will pick up and help the donation, as long as there's community members who will do that.
Mr. Conley said he would help.
Well, and honestly, you know, you guys all know me, I'm, I'm all about the guidelines from, from the Borough Code, and I'm all about complying with the Borough Code, and if you look at the list, CCAT doesn't fit in there.
When we did the CCAT's program.
We were paying, we were paying for, directly for the fee.
They brought the receipts in and got a check.
Yes.
They took the cats, had them done, brought the Borough the receipt, and then they refunded the money through the receipts.
Actually, no, we, originally, we were just paying the, paying the invoice to.
To whoever.
To.
Right.
The organization.
Right.
And, so, and that, that fit, but when you have a separate committee, the only thing.
I think, I think it was ran under the health, health and wellness of, of the citizens.
It says, it says you're allowed to, as long as it's providing a service to the borough.
Right, humane society.
Why, why wouldn't we set it up similar to, to just be a reef?
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, they're not, CCAT technically isn't a humane society. They're, they're taking the animals to the humane society, if we wanted to look at this, reality is, we could give it to the, we could give the money to the animal shelter directly.
And they can pass through that.
Well, you know, but, this whole thing is confusing to me, let me take you back, before the shelter, before CCAT, a long time ago, I came to the borough and I, and I cited to them the need to do spay neuter using the, what was the article that I read at Penn National Racecourse? They were getting overrun with cats, and they started doing the spay neuter program, and found out they were able to control the population, because it's gonna be hard to just get rid of the population, they're gonna be able to control it, and even lower it some, so we decided, the borough decided we were gonna hold some, some trap some and do some spay or neutering, we did two or three, we kept the cats down in the highway shed, and if that came in and did it, we paid the bills, and then as time went on, then the shelter was built, and then here recently, a committee was formed, and I don't understand, you know, truthfully, I believe in it, okay, but I don't understand the relationship between the borough, CCAT, and the, and the, the shelter, I don't understand that whole relationship, and I'd like to know a little more about how that works, this whole relationship works, because it seems to me, as much as I, like I say, I don't know what their involvement is with the shelter, or what their involvement is with the borough, that all of a sudden there's a committee that you're giving money to. Now, are they a five oh one C three?
No.
No.
But they're under the umbrella of the shelter. Is the shelter contributing anything to them?
Yes.
You know, I don't, I don't know, you know, we, originally, when we started this, we wanted to see the budgets of all these organizations, to see where they actually stood. So, I don't know, I, I, I think there needs to be some, at, at least, I, I don't, I don't disagree with changing the funding, but I think at least, because of the reaction this caused, there needs to be some sit-down and discussion with some folks, maybe just management folks to find out, just how this whole operation works, how it's expected to work. Because I hear rumors, and to me, they're rumors, and if someone shows me the facts, you know, what do we do with these cats, what do we do with kittens, things like that there, we pay the bills.
Lucy, that is the co-chair, is willing to sit down and have those discussions, I got an email from her today.
It'll make me feel more.
With anyone who wants to sit down.
Knowing that I know exactly how this whole thing is working, because you've got three groups here, and I don't think there's a, a clear line amongst all three groups, and that's probably what some of the problems are.
You're still worried about spending this money. Why couldn't we just call it even and say, we're gonna give twenty nine thousand, keep it the same across the board for all the groups that were asking, that's gonna give you three thousand dollars, you found fifteen hundred in the lines above, that's forty five hundred back to the budget somewhere else.
Then what happens next year when they come and ask you for ten thousand?
Next year, we will do a decrease.
We've already put that out for like three years now. Well, we can't keep doing that, though, you have to start doing that.
I think that goes back to that conversation, it's need, that needs to be had, so that everybody understands.
And I don't think that they're understanding that, I really don't.
I said, I think that, that need, that goes back to that conversation. Have that conversation, what's expected as we go forward? Barb's saying she thinks it's supposed to be decreased, I don't know. Let's have that conversation, find out.
Well, that, that was.
We're gonna go do this again next year, whoever's gonna do it next year is gonna do it next year.
We are, because every year they come in asking for more than what they got the previous year. I mean, the concern I had last year was they, they talk about it's hard to get the volunteers and, and everything else, yet they were asking for eighty four hundred dollars, and I'm like, if you don't have volunteers, how are you gonna spend all that money? And if we give you that money, the money's gone. I would rather see we, you know, give them money, and if they need more, or the shelter needs more for, for that, then we, then we can make that decision later on in the year.
Okay, so you're saying the shelter, but.
It's, yeah.
I, I explained it, I, I'm gonna explain to you, the shelter does TNR.
They're providing the surgery.
They also have a place for cats to be sold, rehomed, adopted, yeah, I don't wanna use the.
Adopted, adopted.
Adopted, the borough has a cat problem, and has money. The problem was, there was no group between the borough and the veterinarian office, or the cat shelter, they would collect cats. So CCAT was formed.
They're the catchers.
They're the catchers, okay? Our ordinance states that CCAT will be the controllers for cat colonies, and that's why in our ordinance, CCAT has to work with zone, or with codes to control the cat colony policy, because cat colonies have to be registered with the codes department. So that's how they're connected to the borough. But we're using CCAT to collect cats, trap cats, to go through the TNR program, because the only other way would be every individual homeowner grab a cat and drive it out there.
But, what you're, what you're saying is what's, what's confusing me. Okay, they're, they're getting the cats, and they're having, they're having spay neuter, okay? Then the shelter is charging CCATs for that service.
Yes, it's a, it's a separate business.
Yeah, okay, and I also understand, now I understand, if they have kittens, they give them to the shelter, and the shelter sells them.
Adoption, they're adopted.
So.
For a fee.
For a fee.
For a fee.
But that doesn't go back for a cut down on the cost.
I, I say this.
That, that, that's where I'm having a little problem.
I understand that, but it's better to put a cat in a home than to put a cat back out in the street.
Oh, absolutely, there is no doubt about that.
So, if they're, they're gonna provide the housing for that cat till it gets, the shelter for that cat till it gets adopted, all the food, nothing else. They probably get that forty five hours.
I think Sharon might bring clarity to.
Yeah, it would be nice, it would be nice to see some figure.
The other thing, before Sharon, Sharon, before you start, I have one other thing, when this whole program started, it was our wish of council for them to become a, a five oh one C three.
Yeah.
Okay, they chose, and I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying, they chose the easiest route, and that was to come under the umbrella of the cat shelter, which kind of makes it bulky for us.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we get to the pet shelter?
We're not allowed.
Yeah, we are. Yeah, we can, because they would be considered a humane society.
Why don't we just do that and let them?
Done CCAT.
Well, I think they were both here for that. Both, both the cat shelter and CCAT spoke on behalf of CCAT, they are a conjunction.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dr. Nick, the vet was here as the veterinary assistant, and then Tammy, it was, I don't know if she goes under director or.
Yeah, she's the director.
Of this, of the. Of the show. I just wanted to speak to when the program began, that you were pretty fun, I don't wanna drag this out. But I just wanted to touch on that briefly, because we were right, the citizens, the residents were, yes, was taking the cat in, trapping it and taking it in, I think I'm the only person that did that with one, before we started CCAT. But somehow, the, the CCAT at the beginning, the invoices, because immediately after this program was set up, they lost the vet out here, we wanted to use Columbia.
Yeah.
There is no volunteer that wants to take thirty and go the whole way over the Susquehanna Trail with the SPCA, I did it, it's no fun, it's no. And you've gotta go in a high vehicle, your own gas, your own time, light cycle to get over there, then you gotta go back in the afternoon, you gotta just get out of work, never an ideal situation, no volunteer wants to do that, but they did, and, but the invoices were coming in to the finance manager here, as far as I know, Tammy.
Yes.
And she was not able to keep up with all this going on, I guess she wanted to kind of get that off her, but then somehow, after they got the vet back out here, is when we were able then, how convenient is that, that I, I didn't mind transporting it, it was right here now, and going back to taking them off the board for thirty, reasonable, ten minute drive, but, you know, maybe even less, but that thirty five minutes they went back, that was just not feasible for volunteers, it might have been cheaper for the actual TNR part.
Do you know when they changed from TNR to TNVR? Because we weren't originally vaccinating.
No.
So I'm kind of.
I think we always say we're vaccinated for rabies, but we were getting volunteers to pay for that, I gave twenty bucks.
Okay, well, I didn't know that, because it was originally TNR, and now they've changed the.
Yeah, it was there, it was about six months into it that it got changed.
They were collecting money from people that would pay for the vaccination, because it didn't make sense to take a barrel of cat in and then not vaccinate the rabies, and, and they do have to be redone, I guess, after seventy years of booster, or.
Right, right.
I don't think that's gonna be possible to go back out again, but at least we have a leg out one, getting some of them vaccinated, so. Anyway, I, I don't know if that clears any of it up, because I don't know exactly how, I know they wanted to form their own nonprofit, and they were presenting how much that would cost to CCAT itself, and it didn't seem feasible to pay that out when we could go under the umbrella of the animal shelter, and then we all have the same mission, I mean, they all have the passion.
Because Mary, I'm interested too.
So, anyway, that's all I'll say, good night.
Well, I, I think that was a good move, Sharon, the thing is, it doesn't make a clear, I'll say a cable trail.
And I, I, I understand what you're saying now, when CCAT meets, as I recall, they always go over the finances each month, with, with the group. Now, I don't know what that means to you guys, but I'm just saying, they, they do present, what we have left in the account was, you know, what it was used for that month, or whatever, they always do present that to us, so maybe that's something we'd like them to get to, I don't, I don't know how that part works, but.
Is the, is the animal shelter part of that?
They, they can come to the meetings that we have, but don't forget, Alan Sadler. They, they can come to the meetings that we have, but don't forget, Alan sat on the board of the shelter since he was chair. They invited him, they actually, when they decided, the board voted whether or not CCAT could come under their umbrella. And once they did that, they offered a seat on the board to Alan, who was the chair of CCAT. So, he has to show them that they discuss all that at their meetings.
I, I think what would make it clearer financially would be to take the line item away from here and put it under animal services, and have the, sit down with the shelter, have them bill us monthly or something.
That's the way it was, though.
For the, for the cats that are taken care of. And then, it would just be clear. It's providing a service.
Twenty thousand dollar line item then.
Well, no, I'm saying, whatever, we would budget it, what we might give them, and then it would just add, once it reaches its cap, then we're.
And how, what about all the other services that CCAT participates in? They capture the cats?
We, the borough's interest is that cats are being trapped, neutered, vaccinated, and that portion of it.
And, and CCAT is tracking?
Right, and that's volunteers.
Well, they're not getting the money for that, though.
I'm just saying, the financials would be a lot clearer if that's all the borough was involved in, was just that initial part.
There's, there's more, but, so, okay, so it's forty-five hours to TNR. There's also, um, repairs to traps, there's bait, there's, um, blankets, there's food, there's pee pads.
Right, but isn't that stuff they can start raising money for?
The money they ask us was just for the TNR. They fundraised, she said, for the rest of that, to get those pads to do that stuff. The money she was asking us for is specifically to TNR the cat, not for that other stuff.
Okay. So, it's forty-five hours to TNR.
Fifty.
What?
It's fifty.
Well, I did calculations, all right, so fifty. That's twen, uh, a thousand dollars that we're willing to give, that's twenty cats a year.
And don't forget how much is good publicity worth, because this program got a lot of media attention on TV, on newspaper articles, and the merchandiser. I mean, and then other municipalities were coming to us, asking, you know, how do you get this started? So I'm just saying, good publicity is worth something, so.
How many negative is still? I'm just saying, Sharon.
If you're wanting publicity, you shouldn't eliminate the program, nor should you say it's for meat and cats.
I didn't say it's for meat and cats.
But Sharon, that could be anybody. You could take chips and say, we're only going to give you three thousand dollars. And they're going to do the same thing. So you're just telling, that's like a behavior then. If you're.
Can we just give the cats a thousand dollars and be fine?
We're talking about fifteen hundred.
We're talking about fifteen.
Fifteen hundred is what we're talking about. No, two fifteen hundred, not giving a fifteen hundred.
Let's revisit, let's revisit this.
Sharon, let's give CCAT twenty-five hundred.
No, fifteen hundred.
We're moving that fifteen hundred down from community, community program.
No.
Twenty-five hun, move that fifteen hundred from that community, whatever.
Exactly.
It's still less.
So it's, it's.
So it's twenty-five hundred.
Yep, so it's twenty-five hundred.
Thank you.
All right, four fifty-four, culture of parks, fund the crossing, and then the maintenance of the individual parks.
Can we talk about?
No, no, we're not. Move on. Tell me we had to move on.
Can we close this meeting out and come back and start up here? Honestly?
Yes, we can.
This is, I mean, it's ten o'clock tonight.
Yep, oh, yeah, it's ten o'clock.
I do have one, one, one question just to ask. Um, the land bank, I didn't see anything in our land bank. Do we have any costs associated with land bank anymore that we have? I just wanted to make sure.
All right.
In light of that, Kelly, I think, you saw where it's gone is.
Gone, yeah.
I think we should have a, a sit-down.
Any-person meeting.
We haven't had a face-to-face for a while. Once she's on board.
Yep.
Marisol's on board.
Yeah, she's been, she's been there.
Well.
She's been involved, so.
She, the way she talked today, when they can properly reinvest in board, she's only going to be on there.
I saw interim.
Interim, yeah.
Well.
Until, they're going to be posting for his position. He's moving to Philly.
Oh, well, based on that, then, once that happens, you'd have a sit-down.
All right, so, we will pick this up at the November workshop.
Make that motion.
All right, hold on here.
It's done.
Do, wait, do I have to, do I have to table the rest of this from the agenda?
Probably.
Or no?
I would, I'd table it, it would make sense.
All right, can I have a motion to table items nine, B, C, and D until the November workshop?
Remove.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Geezy, second by Councilperson Kaufman to table items nine, B, C, and D to the November workshop. Staff reports, comments, and announcements. Manager, Secretary of Charity.
Yes, I just have one reminder. The Mardi Gras parade will be next Thursday at seven PM. So, hoping the community and everyone comes out, enjoy themselves. Thank you.
All right, Finance Manager, anything, Brian? Yeah, we have checks to sign.
Thanks, Brian.
Borough Council comments.
No, for the sake of time.
Hey, since all the managers are here tonight, today is Boss's Day. I just want to say, you got two hours left.
Councilperson Fisher. No, I have, oh, as I mentioned last week, I did attend the, the county Act one sixty-seven meeting with the Lancaster County Planning Department. They will be contacting us sometime in the beginning of the year to try to determine if we are able to go in with the plan. I will honestly say, it may cost us a thousand dollars, but that is much, much, much less than what it will cost if we do it on our own. Because there's a state grant that's a seventy-five, twenty-five match, and that twenty-five percent would be shared by all the municipalities in Lancaster County. Well, all the MS Word communities, plus, the county is willing to put in half of that twenty-five percent. So, it, it's going to be, um, at the very most, I'm thinking like a thousand dollars a community. But they're talking about how they're going to divvy it up, so, uh, but yes, it's, they're, it'll, we'll have a model ordinance and everything else, it's going to be great, and I would suggest that we go in on it, because like I said, we would spend more than that thousand dollars to redo, to do Act one sixty-seven on our, so. There we have it. Um, yeah, Leo, that was, I went to that watershed meeting last week. All right, next meeting at seven PM on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, Council will hold a regular meeting. Seven motion to adjourn.
So much.
Motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Geezy, adjourn at nine fifty-nine PM, all in favor.
Bye. We're adjourned.
Make it ten, either, we're going to be early.